We gotta get, we gotta put one agenda together. We're gonna run it just a little bit different tonight, okay? Don't be surprised, but I do see a lot of new faces here. I'm gonna open up with the pulley. Pulley. And now I got my chaplain here, thank you for volunteering. Then we're gonna do a ceremonial opening. I'm gonna represent these flags right here. I'd like to call the YNI board, number 24, neighborhood board, to order. Everybody stand if you can stand. Mr. Endel, prayer.
So we pray. Heavenly Father, I do thank you. I thank you for your love toward us. And for all the great things you are doing in YNI. And for your people. And Lord, I just thank you for the freedom you have given us in this country. To be able to say the things we say, to live, to honor you and our community in YNI. We ask once again your blessing. For this community, for this board. I pray a special blessing for our schools as they are getting ready to reopen. May our teachers be rested, excited to start a new school year. Help us to educate our students, our children, in the right way. Once again, best our time, our meeting. May we honor you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Please remain standing. Can't. You say the pledge allegiance right after me. With me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of, with liberty, justice, or all. Remain standing. Ah, 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 ah. Da, na, ah, ah. Eh, ah. Eh, ah. Ah, ni, eh. Ah, ne, na, tha, wa, eh, pa, ne. Be, ka. Alright, at this time, we're gonna move on to item number four, city emergency, first responders. Reports, Honolulu Fire Department. Honolulu Fire Department. Yes. Okay, how about the Honolulu Police Department? Okay, until they come online, we're gonna move on to number five. Which is elected officials, US Representative Jill Tokuda, Congress District Two. Jill Tokuda, Congress District Two. Nobody's online at this time. Okay, let's go to, we're just gonna go through it. Five point two, which is Honolulu Councilmember Andrea Tupala, County District One. Andrea Tupala, County District One. Nobody's online at this time, however, we're still gonna move through the agenda. Five point three, State Senator Miley Shimabukro, Senate District Twenty One. Miley Shimabukro. Senate District Twenty Two. Thank you for the correction. Thank you. Senate District Twenty Two. Not present yet. Five point four, State Representative Cedric Gates, House District Forty Five. Cedric Gates, State Representative, House District Forty Five. Not present yet, moving right along. Five point five, State Representative Darius Keela, House District Forty Four. Darius Keela, Representative, State Representative, House District Forty Four. Being that we don't have any elected officials online yet. We're gonna move forward to number six, item six, however. If you are coming here to speak on the mic tonight, please fill out the form on the table. It's either blue or yellow. And bring it up and pass it to the, to my secretary, which is Kalae Wilber. Okay. Okay. Do we have the names here? What's her name? Rita? Ginho? Rita? Please. Yeah. Okay.
Hello Chairperson.
Aloha Rita.
I am Rita Grillo from Maile, um, Maile Point. And no concern here, but it's an open invitation to the Communities Priority Summit that's being hosted on Saturday. To open an invitation to the panel as well as our community. It's not in conjunction with the YNI Sustainability Plan. It is a separate collection or collective effort with YNI Economic Development Council. And the priorities through a survey that was given out previous months is supporting business and increasing job growth. Caring for Ina environment. Increasing affordable housing, reducing homelessness, strong and resilient families, and achieving digital equity and inclusion. These are, um, these are topics that will be open for discussion and hopefully we can vision cast as how we see our community moving forward. Again, I'd like to reiterate, it's not in conjunction with the Sustainability Plan. This is something that YNI Economic Development Council is talking about. So if I may leave the flyers on the back counter. There is a registration is still open. They're still collecting, if you're thinking that you may be able to come but not able to, please complete the registration because there's a survey that can include your input. As we receive the registration. So it's eight thirty to twelve thirty at the Maile Community Learning Center, Commemorative Schools. And yeah, so if you're kinda interested but unsure, just register so that you can send us your, um, your insight.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Any input?
Will you be staying for the remainder of the meeting or?
Yes, I'll stay. I'll be here.
So if anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Please, there's yellow form on the table back there and also a blue form. If you wanna be able to come up to the mic and speak about, well, anything, any topic, any concerns from the community, please bring it forward to our secretary, Kalae Wilber. Edmund, please. Thank you Edmund.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Edmund. I do not reside in the boundaries of this board. But I do live Miley Point, Franklin Highway, between Hakemo Road and Talkama. I've lived at that residence since June nineteen sixty-seven. And what I'm gonna talk about is we're about three hundred and seventy-five days from the primary, right? And it's gonna be a mail-out again, right? And there's complications with the mail-out ballot, right? First of all, right, um, from the time where I remember being on, right? When you shade in, it's an oval. If you see a rectangle or box, it's check the box. But on the ballot, you need to shade the box. So that's, that's completely against everything anybody has ever learned, right? And because with the ballot, right, the instructions is obviously, I mean, well, it's on the left. Not everybody sees it. You know, it needs, again, I've talked to the Office of Election. And I've asked them to maybe they could highlight it. Now, I wanna make this perfectly clear. I'm not in opposition of the mail ballot. I am not asking for the redesign of the ballot. What I'm seeking is maybe we can help our young voters, right? Who've maybe never voted before, or those who haven't, older like me, huh? That hasn't voted in a long time, that they can get familiar with the ballot. Because in a mail-out ballot, when you put it in the envelope, you're thinking you've done your duty and everything is correct, and you send it to the city clerk. Not knowing that your ballot could be spoiled. And your vote would not count. Now, they say you can always get a ballot if you spoil your ballot. But it's if you knew you spoiled your ballot. What if you had no idea? You know, in the past, I worked in election days at the state capital, right? I've seen all the spoiled ballots. It comes in, it goes through my team, we do the inventory list, and I see them in envelopes. And I'm wondering why so many spoiled ballots? You know, that all started in the year two thousand, when the One Page came about, right? So, so it wasn't until in two thousand fourteen, I worked at Nani Kapono. Then, I found out why there's so many spoiled ballots. You have these young people so gung ho, they wanna do the duties, yes. Right? When you, when you open up the ballot, all you see in front of you, right, is the columns, right? Republican, Democrat, Green, Independent, now get double A, right?
Uncle Edmund.
Okay, I'm getting there.
You have two minutes, yeah, Uncle Edmund, and I got something for you, thank you.
Okay, so the thing is, there needs to be more, um, education to help people understand the ballot. Right? So that again, so that every vote counts. Our senate race, I'm getting there, okay? Our senate race was only forty-two votes. Our House representative was, was close to. So again, um, I'm, 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 thank you for granting me the extra time.
Thank you Edmund. Here's, here's, here's a solution to that, Edmund, you can come, come over here. So, so, so Edmund is talking about ballots. I would like Uncle Edmund to come and educate us. Get a ballot from the balloting department or the voting department. Bring them to YNI, Uncle, bring them to every meeting. Come on in and educate us on that, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move back to, uh. Okay, I got you. Okay, I got it.
The Office of Election not gonna do that.
Okay.
Okay, the only way is if we have somebody that will create something, an example, so that we can have maybe a committee meeting, right?
Thank you Uncle, thank you very much, yeah. Okay, moving right along, we're going back to elected officials. I believe I did see Honolulu Councilmember Andrea Tupala, County District One. Thank you Andrea.
Chair, how are you? Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
So excited to see new faces getting involved in the community. So mahalo to everyone, all of those newly elected, all of those who've been here for a while, we appreciate all of you. So last month, I did send Kika to report, but they ran out of time. So I'll just give a little bit from what was given out last month, and then I'll do this month. So last month, she gave a copy of Bill Fifty-Six, which I've been working on to ease local residential repairs, so that there's certain things that don't need to get a permit, such as fences under six feet, electrical and plumbing work under twenty-five hundred. So it was really a local homeowners repair bill, because we have over eight thousand stuck permits in the city. So we need to get more people out, and especially if it's prohibiting people from getting ADA ramp or doing things that really just make their house more livable, we need to make this more reasonable. So that passed into law last month. I also gave you a copy of the memo rejecting the sixty-four percent, which is the salary increase we talked about about a month ago. Today, I brought Ulehava Canal Rezo. So yesterday, I had a meeting with Congresswoman Jill Tokuda. And I talked with her about four specific things. One is that Ulehava, which is the stream in between where Princess Kahua is and maybe Mojihii Street, that growing is too short, that's why we're constantly digging sand out of there, and that whole river is getting back flooded. So we talked to her about the fact that, and DOT, about the fact that we need to build it out so that it can actually flow and keep it clean, that was one. Talked to her about Makua coming up for discussion in twenty-twenty-nine, the renewal of the lease. Making her aware of the community management model that's being proposed. Brought up to her the work that I had done with former Congressman Kai Kahale, trying to ask her to continue that work with Kole Kole. There's a one-point-five-mile stretch that needs to be repaired. And in the event of an emergency, we need that cleared. We have only one way in and out of YNI. So I asked her as a Congresswoman to please continue the work. He and former Congresswoman Tulsi Gabbard, I've worked with all of them, trying to push them along on that. And lastly, Pa'ke'a, we did apply for a resilience grant to help with the drainage because it floods in that area. That's a federal grant that's given to all areas around military bases. So I asked that she help us to get that grant because the runoff is coming from the military base in Lualualei and coming into the residential areas. So aside from that, I have various things on top of the newsletter. But I would like to make mention that there was a meeting in Maile about a project that's being proposed in Makaha. And we heavily discussed with the developers that that was not right. That if it's gonna be in Makaha, it has to be discussed in Makaha. And so we'll be giving information out about a meeting that Group Seventy and Assembly of God Church will be having regarding their proposal coming up. And we'd like all the community to come, especially those that live in the immediate impacted area. We need that input, and not input from all around, but just right around that area so that they know what's going on. And lastly, in September, we'll be hosting a town hall about property taxes. October first is going to be the deadline for homeowners exemption. We're gonna explain some of the programs that are afforded to local homeowners. And we really want everyone to come out because the increase in home inflations have really let all of our property taxes to go up, and there needs to be something done about it. So we'll be having the Department of Budget and Fiscal Services there and letting the community weigh in on what you think more proposals should be. So I'll stop there and take any questions.
Oh, thank you very much. Anyone on the, the board have any questions for Andrea? Perry has one. Okay, Board Member Perry, and then we'll come to Board Member Endel.
Is she on here? Okay.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you Perry.
And, oh, hi Andrea. You know, with the, um, the, the increase in projects for housing along the rail, um, the concern I have is they're replacing grocery stores and putting affordable housing. And this leaves the residents nowhere in walking distance to go food shopping. The example I'm talking about, although it's not in our neighborhood, the Times Supermarket in Waipahu and Don Quixote's. So imagine that's no longer grocery, gonna be houses. So people that walk and have a lot of elderly, where are they gonna go shopping? So when removing and replacing, there's really deep thought needs to go into replacing and rebuilding, that everything works together. And if, okay, so if there's some kind of proposal that can be done on that, that would be appreciated. And my understanding, when Senator, you know, he was alive, he've given a lot of money to address the issue at Kole Kole Pass. Where did that money go? How was it used? I, I don't know, but there was a lot of money directed to address Kole Kole Pass. And that's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Thank you Perry.
Thank you Board Member Perry. So first off, I'll forward you via email the copy of the proposal in Waipahu. So the landowner is Commemorative Schools, the developer is High Ridge Costa. And there is gonna be a grocery store and also commercial things such as hair cutting places. But I'll send it to you so you can take a look at it. And then secondly, in regards to Kole Kole, the money from the senator was used to make a suspension bridge where the road washed out, I'll send you a picture of it. That was one of the things I brought up to Congresswoman Tokuda, is that with all the money they spent to redo a bridge there, why is the road still closed? So millions of dollars to do a bridge and then just keep it closed? I, I can't fathom why we wouldn't try to repair the rest of it and at least let some military access, maybe one-way access. So I did bring that up, and I can send both of you, both of those pieces of information to you via email.
Great, and one more thing I forgot, okay? I just heard that, um, in Nanakuli, there's Hawaii Housing Authority, um, units, but less than fifty. And there's a proposal of five hundred units going in that area. And the problem is gonna be same like where Maile, where Kali Watson built a project along the canal, gonna be same issue with the road. There's only one way into, to that residential area in Nanakuli. It's next to the Samoyin Church. It's by Hawaii Housing Authority. And they wanna replace that with five hundred units, which means they're gonna go sky high. Gonna cause a lot of issue, it's not conducive to infill like two thousand people in that area.
Yes, I agree. I saw the email, yeah, I saw the email from Patty Teruia, but I do think that Representative Gates or Senator Shimabukro can keep us updated. For those of you who didn't hear, it's right there where his highest praise is right on Farrington. So where it says Nanakuli Hawaiian Homes, like that area. But I don't know how far along in discussion it is, but we will keep an eye on it again as it's a state project, so, thank you.
The road, the road is gonna be the issue, which is the city.
Uh, so Farrington Highway, which is how you access.
The, the road to go in.
Perry?
Thank you.
Perry, could you please get in touch with the, with Andrea offline, thank you very much.
Thank you Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair, Chair, I have a, Chair, I have a question for you. Andrea, I understand our three-year program gonna start up again.
It's fourteen.
Um, how, the different places, you might wanna let the public know.
Okay.
Because it's an excellent program.
Thank you, so we have an outreach project, one is at Assembly of God in Makaha. The outreach area is from Lahi Lahi all the way to Makaha Surfside. So we're inviting all of those homeless to come. It's going to be twice a week for one hour. We help with documentation, housing, work, medical attestation forums if they need womb care. And then the second spot is going to be at Arc of Safety. I wanna thank John Travis for helping with that, thank you. Thursdays, five to six, Pastor Jaden's Church, starting the second week of August. We have one at LMS Church in between Mojihii and Kahal, Monday, Wednesdays, five to six. And then we have one at River of Life, next to Seven-Eleven. They bought the old gamehouse, game room, hallelujah. And so there's a church there instead of a game room. So it's gonna be there, and then we have one location in Kapole. So you can email my office if you want to get involved. But really, getting involved means actually interfacing with individuals and helping them progress into housing or work. So, thank you Mr. Endel for all your help.
The other thing, uh, I, I noticed, although it's not your problem, but you have it on your flyer about the, the school buses. Is there a resolution and they're looking at? Because most of the public have no idea what we're talking about, the school bus problem.
So they did reach out to the city the week before school started to ask for help. So the city did allow for city bus passes. But our concern is that the regular city buses are already full. So they do have extra buses right at YNI High School at the conclusion of school. But of course, parents are concerned about adults and children on the bus at the same time. So because they only told us a week before school started, in order for us to create new bus routes in the city, it takes about four months to create a new route, get a new driver system. So we're gonna see as, if we can do as much as we can. But the school district still hasn't given us exactly which ones are getting canceled, what's those routes look like, and how many children are on that bus. That would help us greatly so that we can see how to help more. That's all I know I have right now.
So if you don't know, um, because, uh, the, the guys who run the, the school buses are having difficulty with drivers. And they're gonna cater mainly to the elementary school, if possible, the intermediate. The high school have to find their own way, but, but, so what she's talking about, they're gonna give them hollow carts, I guess, for, for catch the city bus? But my concern was, and, 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 and I guess you guys are on top of it. Not all of, the buses get to the deep end to where a lot, a lot of the kids are, right? So they might have to walk a, a long distance. It might be, depending on the neighborhood, it might be an unsafe walk. Um, so, so it is, uh, a situation, I, I felt, you, you as a public need to know that what's coming up, and it's, because it's gonna come up soon. Uh, this situation with the school buses and our kids.
Thank you. Uncle Richard.
Uncle Richard, thank you Chair. Andrea, um, we are in the process of starting our transportation committee. So can you put us on your loop? And let us know in any area that, um, you know, be a concern on Farrington Highway, uh, the whole Farrington Highway, all the way to Kapole, right up to Ka'aua'ula. I would appreciate that.
We have projects we're working on, and I'd love to present it at your committee.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Any other board members concerned? Sir? Step up to the mic, please, real quick.
You can come up here.
That's okay, and don't worry.
Hi, I'm, I'm Ray, and I'm from Makaha, and I live on Makaha Street. Uh, my question to you is, um, we have the city buses coming up and down Makaha Street. Makaha Street is a, um, street that has no curbs, no drains, no gutters, no sidewalks. And the city has been, um, involved in it, and it's, now they're saying that the state has to be involved. How do we as residents of Makaha, um, get the city and the state to talk to each other about this problem? We almost had a fatality this, this afternoon, um, with our, um, somebody on a surf, uh, surfboard and a bicycle, and the bus almost clipped him. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, so I will get your information and work with you on it. So it's not a city street, or it is? It is. Okay, so you're saying that it needs more safety things such as sidewalks, gutters, drainage? Oh, you're talking about the turnaround. I'll get with him on this, and then Uncle Richard, we can discuss in your committee.
At the Transportation Committee, thank you so much. We'll take that to Transportation, I got one more, I think, right here, committee. Go ahead man, come on, come on, we got time, we're pressing for time up here. Move right along, right after you. You coming up?
I'm not sure how this goes, this is the first time I've been here.
Speak to the chair.
My name is Carolyn Bailey.
Thank you Carolyn.
Um, when Andrea just said today about the Makaha project, uh, that she's gonna be addressing, I don't really, um, we don't even know that there is a project that is gonna be happening in Makaha, that's one. Um, the second thing, um, I'm not sure if this is for Andrea, but shall I wait? Because this is regarding the Makaha Bridge closure.
Okay, we're gonna take that to the Traffic Committee. Thank you very much, that's the Traffic Committee, I'm the Transportation.
Well, do I address them now?
But it's a, it's a community concern.
Sorry, so, so questions right now is just for councilmember, and then for as far as the bridge project, you can bring that up in community concerns. So right now, we're just addressing any questions we have for, um, councilmember. Just councilmember, yeah.
Yes, and then we're calling up community concerns right after this, yeah.
So we'll give you information about the Makaha Project. So to your point, there are many people who don't know, that's why we're asking that they share with the community way before anything happens. On the, on the Wapneis side of the valley, they bought a parcel of land, the church did. And so they're looking to develop it, and they had a kind of a community gathering to see who thought what about what should happen. And I'm encouraging them to do that meeting in Makaha with the people who live there. So I'll let you know.
Yeah, thank you very much, we'll move right along. Concerning the Makaha Bridge, we're gonna get with you, please put your email down there. And we're gonna open up the board business soon, but it's not, it's not now. But hang on, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about the Makaha Bridge. Okay, thank you very much, any concerns, community concerns, uh, for Andrea.
A gentleman back with me as well, questioning about, before I come up, he has a question about the, the church organization that's on Kalawaha and the development, what's, what's coming on? Kalawaha, there's a forty-acre property that got sold to this shelter group. Okay, please, can you explain to him?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'd like to express, I'm a landowner in the area. It's a really bad idea to build it there.
Sir, address your name.
It's a really bad.
What's your name, sir, state your name and business.
Ken Suiso.
Ken Suiso, alright, Ken, I saw your email come through, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Speak to the chair though, she can hear.
Yeah, so it's, it's, I think it's a really bad idea. First of all, there's a lot of homeless shelters in the area, we don't need another one put vicinity of all other places, agriculture land, it's in a flood zone, it's in a landslide zone, it's in a brushfire zone, and it's next to a hunting area. Agriculture land, it's in a flood zone, it's in a landslide zone, it's in a brushfire zone, and it's next to a hunting area. And the access is through private roads that are unlit, no sidewalks, really, it's not a good idea. And if it's put there, and I have a background in emergency management, working for the Army Corps of Engineers, EMA. It's a really, you could potentially doing a development there, take out the bridge, which would block all of Makaha, cut off Makaha from the rest of the the island. So it's a really bad idea to allow.
And just just for clarity, it's not a city project, it's a private project. So I asked them, even though they're private owners, that they need to meet with the community and let us know even what the concept is. Because many people are concerned. It's a large property. And like you said, on Aglan, you can't really build a lot. So we wanna kind of know, like, that could keep Makaha Makaha. So we really wanna know on on the front end of this and not after everything's pal, what's gonna happen there. So trust and believe, I will invite everyone to the meeting, every one, because I think that.
Thank you very much.
To be a part of this.
Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on the, I can what they was talking about, it can be happening, the the city DPP proves that.
State your name.
Austin Salcedo.
Austin Salcedo.
And the DCCA, Department of Consumer Protection, uh the consumer, consumer, anyway, the DCA. They're gonna turn that into CPR, so that is possible, but gotta stop them at that point, the DCCA, Department of Consumer Affairs, whatever they call that. Anyway, I'd like to bring up Andrea, um Bill seven, twenty twenty, um it turned into City Ordinance twenty dash thirty six. I'm making awareness to you right now because I brought this attention to the city executive committee, uh Executive Affairs Committee. His name is Representative Tyler DeSantos Tam. And he's the head, he's the chair for the committee, because I'm bringing it up to the attention that uh back in March eighteen, twenty twenty, uh former representative, our councilman, Ikaka Anderson, had bypassed a protocol denying public testimony, the opportunity of testimony. This is for the public infrastructure, technology, and stability. This for basically septic system connecting to city sewer system. So we're gonna challenge that, because even though we connect to a septic system already, we are required to hook up into a city sewer system. So I'm gonna, we're gonna challenge that, but we're gonna make you aware of this. It's coming down the pipes. And I'm communicating with the uh DeSantos Tam on this measure at at the Executive Affairs Committee. That's one item. I have another after that. Secondly, okay, uh this, the issues that were at K O's in Makaha area, there's a lot of uh bad behaviors happening. I we, I'm a agriculture landowner out there at K O's, and I had uh rogue dogs, balled, killed, attacked. And my wife's four milking goats, a neighboring on the east side of the park.
Thirty seconds, Salcedo.
Dead. But uh the issue is, we have a lot of homelessness with uh dogs. A total of eight dogs per uh homeless uh encampment there. Uh June nine, June sixteen, HPD had given them citation. They're they're crapping on the ground. And not only that, we had a monk seal that got viciously at killed at uh Ohike Lolo and uh K O's. So it's monk seal. And also, we had a fire just last week, Wednesday, on my neighbor's property. They could have been affected, my property could have been affected by that. We had an arrest of a homeless individual got arrested over at Ohike Lolo, that's a state land. But started off, might win its founder from K O Beach Park all the way to she got arrested in Ohike Lolo, starting another fire. Okay? And also, we just had a stabbing this past Saturday night over at uh Lahilahe Park, right across some lawns, a female at nine o'clock at night got stabbed in the neck. Basically, we have bad behaviors with our homeless population out here. And what is a control, who is responsible? And uh we had a conversation on an email with Tanya Tehotu from the Outreach. And she had mentioned about some type of community, type of outreach, but with a petition from the courts to medicate this individual. I'd like to continue this conversation, even with Senator Shima Bakur, who was who made this uh conversation happen with the Kealau West of Wau.
Okay.
So uh I'll bring in attention to this matter, and uh we need to address the homelessness with these bad behaviors. They have some type of psychotic, type of uh uh I I don't know what you can call it.
Terry, are you here?
Nothing wrong. They're talking to themselves, yelling for themselves. But anyway, I'll bring it to attention. So that's all I have. And also, do we have HPD on on virtue today? A ch- a chair?
Say again?
HPD on virtue, because I'd like to give them my presentation.
Not yet, not yet. Okay, thank you. All right. Hang on, Edmund. Hang on, we already got the questions. We gotta answer them. Okay, I I I.
I'll go with Uncle Austin. I mean, let's just be honest, the situation is severe.
Okay.
Like from basically Makasa Surfside all the way down, we have two outreach workers from Kealau West. And we love the work they do, but that's just not enough. I have asked the governor to help with more outreach workers. I have asked the city. We are doing a lot of community outreach, but with the amount of new homeless that we have, it's, we definitely need more. So I'll continue to petition to the state and the city for more resources. I appreciate all the churches that are helping, but we really need focused and dedicated case managers that can take them from aid to all the way to medical, to making sure that there's womb care, as well as a mental health evaluation. So I'll keep Uncle Austin updated on that, and I'll get in that email with Miley.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Okay, thank you very much. Terry, if you could, please come over here and sit down, please.
Hi, my name is Edmund. Um I'm gonna address an uh PVT. I know they didn't, they don't, they're not in the balance of this.
Uncle Edmund, please. I didn't recognize you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Have a seat, please. Have a seat.
So I'm gonna be able to answer, ask the council member a question. I I wanna ask her a question.
Logan?
AI? Okay.
Go ahead.
Um this is concerning um Bill thirty nine, I believe it's um two thousand and twenty-two CD one. I believe he was in that um budget meeting, right? And he talked about um um about.
Uncle, be be very specific.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I want you to come to the point right away. I don't wanna hear all of this bill that you should be, sir.
Grant others privilege to go rambling on, and I gotta be, I'm trying to get to that.
I gave you your time.
Okay, I wanna make sure she she understands the question.
You got one minute. I gave you your time.
Okay.
Go ahead, man, be nice.
My question is to her. Yeah, I think it talks about, in summary, about those who reside near uh active landfill. Gonna be um budget, I'm sorry, sorry, tax credits or something at that point. Now, PVT is scheduled to close. They came to the um on June twenty second.
Uncle Edmund, I'm gonna tell you one more time. You listen to me real quick. That's a Nanakuli concern. You take that to the Nanakuli Board. This is the Y and I Board. We have a different jurisdiction. Please, stop right there. Sit down, please. Thank you very much.
You mentioned with all Y and I in your last board meeting.
Exactly, we are, but there's jurisdictions involved, okay? And I'm trying to take your Y and I business, and this is the reason why I'm streamlining the.
Between those um credits.
The credits for Bill thirty nine are for residents around the landfill within a half mile distance. But to your point, once PVT closes, that area won't be um eligible for credits, but around one mile of gorge, it will be. So it is a current bill that's up for discussion. It's Bill thirty nine, twenty twenty-three. And we'll be hearing it in the Budget Committee, which is in three weeks.
Andrea, hang on, we got somebody online. Michael Rice, go ahead.
So uh Andrea, uh well, my name is Michael Rice. Um Andrea, I'd like to ask a follow-up question. I remember if we talked uh a few months ago at the the crime meeting. Um I didn't get to voice my concern in the meeting, but I did it over email with you um about the student on Y and I High School campus who had a firearm on his person and was not reported to HPD. I wanted to know if there was any follow-up to that. Uh I've already reported this to DOE, and they just said they would have an investigation into it.
Uh so Mike, I'll copy you in the email with the prosecutors and the police that are handling the case.
All right.
Thank you.
Cassandra Werner.
Cassandra Werner.
Hi, um my concern is about the unhoused. We just did a camping trip, and I had homeless to my left, homeless to my right. And then my Kiki got a walk past a bunch of homeless to get to the the shower. And a lot of them do drugs, and we found a lot of, you know, little baggies. We even found needles in the walls when we was cleaning our area to set up for the kids. So my concern is, what are we doing? Uh how can I participate to help you guys? And um what is the progress going on with the homeless near the schools? Because I feel like Y and I, especially Y and I High School and Y and I Intermediate, not far ready with the homeless being surrounded by these kids. We gotta give them something different. So what are we doing?
I felt a sigh of relief when you said, what can I do to help? So thank you for saying that. I'm gonna get your number. Um I can say that the property next to the high school is state-owned, so I'm not totally sure what they're going to do with the boat harbor area. But I can say that the outreachers that we're doing, I wanna loop you in. Because I think once we start talking about it, you're kind of see where the gravity of it, where did you guys camp? Okay, yeah, it's getting bad over there. So I'll get your information. I'll start looping you in on what we're doing to see if you have more insight on how we can do better. Thanks.
Please state your name. Come on, sir. State your name.
Uh Peter Mulder at Makaha, North Leo Road.
Thank you, Peter.
I wanna echo uh Austin Salcedo and Ken Suiso's statement. And I have concerns about the church or whatever, the property. And I think it's a bad idea. I don't, you know, uh this homeless situation seems to be getting out of hand, and it seems like everything is coming to this, to the west side. And uh it's, to me, it's a health and safety issue. I have other things to say, but I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. Aloha, Bart.
Thank you, sir.
I'll invite him to the meeting.
Okay. Okay, James. State your name, James.
Thank you, Chair. I wanna first, I wanna acknowledge the whole board. I hope you have abundance of success in the next two years. I know you guys are gonna be busy. And for Andrea, I wanna say thank you for bringing up Kealau, and she is absolutely correct. There are only two caseworkers for five hundred people they have. That's five hundred people each. I just had a family member get accepted into Kealau. It was an emergency situation. And Kealau did an upstanding job on that. Um this family member was living, got kicked out, living on Miley, Miley Beach. But he had to have air supply, and they had no electricity, nothing, so he had a hard time breathing. So this was a emergency case, and he was able to get in. And I know the caseworkers were overworked, and they did an awesome job of getting him this place that he needed. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Really appreciate that. Okay, thank you, Andrea. Moving right along. We got Representative uh Miley.
Yes, hello, sorry, I, yes, can you hear me?
Miley, Miley, we got you online, yes.
Okay, yes, sorry, I couldn't get the video link to work for some reasons. I apologize, but I'm just on the phone. Um but um several announcements. So I visited the US Vets Y and I Shelter not long ago. Uh and they informed me that they have openings, uh that they accept walk-in, self-referrals. People can have up to two pets, uh as long as they have a letter from the doctor indicating they're comfort animals. Every resident gets a case manager assigned to them. They have rental assistance for tannif recipients, uh welfare. They do housing first referrals um and provide counseling on site. So it's an excellent opportunity. It's twenty-four hour shelter. Um and please take advantage of that. Um in regards to the the dangerous dogs and wild dogs running around the K O area, um some advice that I've heard from, you know, others in similar situations is if they're coming onto your property, I mean, do what you gotta do, whether shooting them, poisoning them, trapping them. And I'm also willing, if I can get photos of the dogs, um to put a call out on social media um for volunteers to help um with this dangerous situation. Um Pal Kia Road, opening it up for twenty-four access, twenty-four seven access. Um the latest update is that the city and DOT are working on a MOU so that DOT can take over the road um and start the studies necessary to make it a daily access road. Makaha Bridge, um DOT has announced that they're looking at changing the dates. The full closure looks like it's gonna be the weekend of September twenty-nine. Um and they're looking at different mitigations such as shuttle service, hotel reimbursement, et cetera, for the two hundred and nine homes that would be affected. They're gonna be going door to door, August fifth and sixth. Um in addition, they also mailed out um surveys to residents that are gonna be affected. Um in regards to the question about the land between the harbor and the high school, um the DOE is planning to expand the Y and I High School Marine Science Learning Center. They're gonna put aquaculture tanks um on that land as the plan. Um so as not to affect the alkaline ponds, but to um actually take advantage of the topography, which is right near the ocean, brackish water. Um and it's very exciting, the ogo that's being grown there and the the other products that the students are are raising is a very exciting opportunity for commercialization to raise funds for the DOE. Um and let's see. And then finally, um the transitional housing project that's behind Y and I Intermediate School, um it's gonna be um taken over by by Mark Development. And so they will be um making it into actually um low-income rentals. Uh and so I'll keep the community posted as that project develops. Um but those are the bulk of my announcements at this point, and I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Board members? Board Member Perry?
Sure. Thank you, Miley. I just wanna um um thank HDOT for the improvement on Farrington Highway with those um I don't know what you call them, but it's blocking so they cannot make left turn of Farrington Highway, the one in Nanakuli. So this this improvement is really helping. And you know state land, Miley, um when developers, um you know, TMT, TMT, for example, does every, whoever wants to develop or utilize state land, they get billed a dollar a year? Is that how it goes?
You know, it it really depends. I mean, if it's if it's state lands, like under DHHL's jurisdiction, I mean, the whole purpose of leasing out state land is to raise revenue for beneficiaries on the waitlist. And so in that situation, they're gonna be charged the market price um to support the trust. Um I guess it all depends, you know, but if you're talking about um like a public pur- purpose, you know, like a hospital or a school or something like that, um then the price, you know, then it's adjusted accordingly. So it kind of depends on whether it's, you know, national security or whether it's, so, yeah, it's not, I think it's a spread.
Yeah. So the one that um UH, the um the telescope, yeah, dollar a year, my understanding. And they were charging the um astronomer sixty thousand dollars an hour. How is that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, that, and that's why, I mean, that's why we passed legislation to change the whole management structure um of the um those those, the te- telescopes. And um fortunately, Kali Hua Krug, who's um from our coastline, is gonna be one of the new um commissioners um that's going to be overseeing those telescopes. So hopefully, we'll start to see policies um change and want to, you know, have the public provide more input as to what they'd like to see in terms of lease rent and what kind of benefits package should be given to the community.
It's so underhanded, um how, you know, if you UH really under, there was really under the radar and underhanded. So lastly, school counselors, are are they working with um girls, especially regarding um self-awareness or education on um human trafficking? If not, something needs to be done um about addressing or making awareness of um human trafficking for sex exploitation, uh if you could put something in place to address that issue. Thank you, Senator.
Sure. Yes, yes, there is funding in the budget um looking at uh the issue of trafficking, since it's such a serious issue. So we have, we did put quite a bit of money into that, into the state budget.
Moving right along. All right, we have uh Jyutukuda online. Questions for Miley. Go ahead, state your name, please.
Austin Salsero, hello, Senator.
Hi, Austin.
Hi, I like that idea about, uh, protecting our agricultural land from this rogue dogs. They're not feral, they have collar, neck collars on them. So they belong to some owner at some point. And we will notice that homeless individuals on, on the city grounds where there's no trespassing, no parking, they're still there since June 16th, when we first HPD gave them a citation. Something, some type of measure has to be moved on. So our homeless committee, I'll ask this board to move a motion for our homeless committee, houseless committee, to move on this, how to pursue it in, uh, the issues on the homelessness on our coastline that's on there. And also the issues at like Makaha, uh, 1170 Ferentin Highway, that, uh, mental health facility there, how they came about to be? We need to, the discussion on that matter itself. Why are they there? Since 1983, there was a permit that was cut, that was from the last meeting. We need to know, we need to visit that permit that allowed mental health to be in that particular property. Because we're inviting all over the island to enter our area. And not only that, too, their Medicaid is somewhere along the line. I don't want going through privacy information. But they have some type of psychotic and they're, they're stabbing each other, burning properties. They have their dogs that can't be controlled, killing my, killing my wife's pets. So I move this thing on to the homeless committee for discussion because they're impacting the agricultural land and the city park land as well, too. Miley, the, uh, protecting our, uh, property and shooting the dogs, please come up with a resolution because all these animal activists protects against that. So come with a state resolution that we can protect our property and like a Castro's doctrine, self-defense, and we can drop these dogs like the, like the big island can. Okay?
Okay.
So we wanna not enable this homelessness into outreach program. We want to disable it from coming here. So our homeless committee, houseless committee can look into the situation. Not give them a, uh, dog and pony show entertaining this thing. We need to disable this thing, this, this rights to come to our beaches and being exempt from owning dogs without, uh, microchip, without a leash. Eight dogs per campsite, that's overabundant. That's all I have. So bring it to the houseless committee. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you.
Aloha, my name is Mapuana Tector. Uh, congratulations to the new board members. And aloha, Senator Shimabukuro. Uh, my question to you, as you have mentioned the full road closure, which entails the bridge to Makaha, is who determines the closures? And how did that occur? Be it a private situation without the community response? And even if you do a survey, I would suggest, if possible, that you come up with a alternative outlet, meaning pave a road so there's one access road for first responders, let alone the residents with their vehicles and taxpayers. So, um, if we could, you know, create a dialogue for the YNI residents, also the us that use that, um, facilities. So a resolution like yesterday.
Yes, will do, yeah. And like I said, um, you know, so it looks like it's gonna be the weekend of September 29th, um, instead. It's gonna reschedule. And it's due to the availability of crew and materials. And I, I guess, I guess it's just something that can't be avoided. But they are looking at, DOT is looking at providing shuttle service, hotel reimbursement, and, um, and emergency vehicles will still be allowed to go, uh, to respond to emergencies, um, on the other side of the bridge. Um, but yeah, I realize it's a, it's a huge inconvenience. And, um, you know, they're doing everything, we're doing everything they can to, uh, you know, to mitigate it as much as possible.
Thank you, uh, Lenford. Board Member Lenford.
Um, thank you, Miley. Um, Richard Lenford here. Um, I need your help because, uh, talking to Ryan, um, from DOT, he's telling me that the Mypala War Bridge is not gonna be open until June of 2024. But the bridge looks like it's, it's, um, completed. So I was wondering if, uh, with your help, you can find out, you know, um, why, why is it gonna take another year? When, uh, it looks like it's paved and it's ready to go? I asked them, why did they make the turns over there? Because of the two, two, uh, uh, traffics that wants to do a left turn in Mypala War as well as to the park, they would stall, they would back up all the traffic instead of, you know, opening, um, thinking on the configuration a little bit better. But he's not gonna answer me, um, uh, so I was wondering if you could, that, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome, yeah. Oh, I'm just saying here, yeah, that we heard from them, from DOT, yeah, late spring, the project ran to utility conflicts with the water line and fiber optic line. The contractor also had issues that required rework. We'll put out a news release next week or soon to provide details about the completion date. This is from DOT. Yeah, I know, I know, it's unfortunate. We will do our best to push, to push it to be, uh, ASAP on that Mypala War Bridge.
Kali?
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, Miley. Miley, the concern I have, um, you know, the safety and well-being of the people at Keahoe, okay? The state owns the back part of the mountain. I'm right in between. I'm a sandwich, okay? The safety and in the front of my property, city-owned. Ohiki Lolo, state-owned. The thing is, you know, we've been hearing about issues, unethical hunters, people trespassing with guns and everything. All call 911, you know, do this. But let me tell you, the state knows the problem and the city knows the problem. Stop adding and abetting and compromising the well-being and safety of my Kupuna and the residents. Do your job, that's why we put you folks in there. I'm tired of the excuses. And don't make a result, make a bill. It's been too long because you guys knew how the property was. How many animals died? I raised those goats from babies, bottles. The thing is, stop adding and abetting city and state. I'm talking to both of you folks. Stop, finger pointing, playing nice in the sandbox. I'm the one who's gonna throw the pooh-hako at you. You can have the sand. Don't compromise the safety of the well-being of the community. Enough is enough. Stop it. You're a lawmaker. You represent the poor people. What about the middle-class people that's struggling every day? This is unethical behavior of our lawmakers in our city. HPD is overwhelmed. Take responsibility, that's all I have to say. This is not a dog and pony show. Mahalo.
Thank you, Kali.
Well, and that's why I appreciate so much that you reported that specific person who was an arsonist on, at Keahoe. Um, that's the kind of identification that we need. And then that's why I, I then alerted Connie Mitchell from IHS and Tanya Tehotu from Keahoe. Uh, because the state expanded funding for the assisted community treatment program, which is involuntarily, involuntary mental health treatment. Um, and so if you're gonna specifically identify people who are a danger to the community or themselves, um, then we, those petitions can be started. And we expanded it to, for funding. And also now the Attorney General's office can, um, assist with those petitions as well. Um, so yeah, I appreciate your advocacy.
Chair, I have one thing said. They said of, for mental health and get them the proper services. You forcing people against their will, okay? These guys has been dealing with this, to play Russian roulette with people who has, it could be a certain mental health. It could be the loss of love on, and they're going through distress. It could be their drug addiction. But the part is, the state is making money. State and city is making money. They're adding and abetting the situation. And YNI, 96792, is the holding tank. Think about it. We are tired being the holding tank. Take responsibility. Stop adding and abetting a situation. Don't look for a money bucket. We're, we're taxpayers. We're homeowners. We have our rights, our constitutional rights for well-being.
Thank you, Kali.
Safe, living, we're not getting it. I'm not asking lawmakers, I'm demanding.
Thank you, Kali. Appreciate that.
Mahalo.
Chair. Chair.
Crossbar, yes.
Um, hi, Senator, this is Board Member Crabbe. I'm really quickly going back to, um, Mr. Salsero's, um, request, um, to have this conversation in the homelessness committee. Um, we'll be having that, well, we'll try to get that scheduled as soon as we can for next month. So we can have that discussion, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cross.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, moving right along. We're gonna move to, uh, Jill Takuta, Congress District 2's representative.
Um, aloha, everybody, sorry.
Hang on, hang on, Jill.
Oh.
Hang on, hang on.
Um, yeah, um.
Is it for Senator or?
No, 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 no. It's not for the, no, Senator. They get paid, they guys work for us. Like I saw Sharon, that now he, he, he the new chair, right? So now, I, I like, I like the community first.
Brother, state your name, please. State, state your name, please.
Michael William Capolino Eli.
Okay.
Okay. When Sharon was over here, I mean.
Is it a question for Shimabukuro?
No, 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 no. To the border.
Cause we're coming, we, we're coming, we're coming. We're gonna come to you.
That community concern is before all of this.
Oh, we changed the agenda, you know? It's, it's, it's changed. But, but you can, you can be able to speak.
Taxpayer, brother.
Because we, we revised the agenda. So you, we're gonna call you up.
I'm not gonna wait all night, cuz I wake up 3 o'clock for.
That's right, I know.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna wait over here all night, 9 o'clock.
Let us get you the, the, the representatives and then we're gonna come to the community.
The agenda is the community.
It is, it is. Thank you. Okay, here we go. Go ahead, Jill, or your representative, Congress District 2.
Aloha, sorry, um, the representative and the, the person who's supposed to present the neighborhood board report wasn't able to log on, but I can give a brief, um, statement about what, uh, Congresswoman Jill Takuta will be doing in August. Um, she's doing a Takuta in your town, which is an outreach event for her constituents in, um, Congressional District 2. Um, she'll be going out into the community and, um, whatever constituents need help with regarding federal agencies or, um, if they need support from a certain federal agency, they can go ahead and go to these events where, um, the Congresswoman and her staff will be there to help in person. And, um, basically regarding anything with like passport, immigration, IRS, social security, and veterans' benefits. Uh, yeah, but that's, that's one of the main things she's doing in her August recess. Um, all the other things, you can go ahead and defer to our office number or go ahead and go to our website. Thank you.
Board members, any question? Perry online? Go ahead. Board Member Perry.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, this is for US Congress member Jill Takuta. My concern is the, um, the release of Makua back to the community. You know, the city is working on the YNI coast, YNI Sustainable Plan. And in that plan, it states about a gathering place. Makua should be the gathering place. I believe truly that that could be a magnet for this community to continue, or if not, um, um, practice our culture. And it has been practiced even under the guardianship of the military of Makahiki. Do not extend the, um, agreement. When it end, it's end, it's all done. And that site should be our gathering place. Secondly, Japan had a tsunami March 2011. They wanna, Japan wants to release the nuclear waste into the Pacific Ocean. That needs to not happen. We live in the Pacific Ocean.
Board Member Perry.
Our food come from the Pacific Ocean. Thank you. Stop.
Thank you, board, yeah. Okay, come on.
Stop.
Okay. We're gonna discuss that, Perry. It's gonna be on board business. We'll, we'll bring you back on, on board business. Go ahead, we got one more.
Austin Salsero, uh, representative from our Congresswoman Takuta. Uh, I need the point of contact, uh, information. I wanna make awareness of our, um, monk seals being murdered on Keahoe Beach Park and, uh, the threats of fire being at Keahoe agriculture property that's threatening the migratory ocean birds. I need a point of contact in DC level because of the jurisdiction is prohibiting our NOAA on, in Hawaii and our, uh, US Fish and Wildlife, um, enforcers because management's protocols, because DLNR is supposed to be the jurisdictional area for the migratory birds and NOAA for the monk seals. But there's a, there's a blockage. So I need, uh, basically the, what I'm trying to get to is DLNR has a managed shortage. So they cannot enforce what's going on over here. We had one enforced from DLNR, one. I was told we're supposed to have five, but no, we only have one. So I need the jurisdiction to be lifted to allow the US Fish and Wildlife and US NOAA to be also involved with this, you know, investigation that's occurring at Keahoe because of homelessness that's causing the impact in our area. So I need a point of contact number. Can you give that to the Chair or the co-chair? The information of the point of contact and I'll get it from them at a later time, like tomorrow? That's a question.
Um, yes, I can go ahead and put it in the chat, um, our office number and our email. But thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you, Representative, uh, from Congress District 2. Okay, we're gonna open this thing up to the community concerns. Eli, step up to the mic, please.
Aloha, Michael William Capolino Eli again. Um, I was wondering if you guys can go, um, see if Eric Eno's and about that paved road up YNI Valley? Cause I think it's toxic, yeah? And then they're in, build a road with, a state would never know, they never have no grading license. Um, no more historic, uh, that's on historic preservation land. Um, they never have, um, environmental impact statements when they made that road. And then now, I was hunting on Sunday, where I taking a fire break, and, and that too, where the fire break money went. I mean, on Cedric Gates and Eric Eno's, I don't know, they was gonna make sheep, but then steal the fence. So, and then chronic to steal the fence, so I don't know. I mean, they possibly have the sheep. I, I, I don't know what was the deal with that. I mean, with the sheep and the fire break and whatever. But I taking a fire break every Saturdays. And then now, on Sunday, I'm in hunt over there, where I take care. Now get like, um, scourges now, I mean, guys over there riding horses now. So now who's gonna pay for, or, or insurance on the guys that riding horses up there? Because lucky, I get collars that shock the dogs and beat the dogs where I can control my dogs. Because the dog will go rush the horse, like I was whipping my one dog, but my dog listened cuz I beat him and I think they come around, they don't like the business, they don't like get shot. So they come running back to me and then I tell them, oh, cuz you guys get insurance. They say they get insurance, but I like know who gonna be, um, liable for that and who gonna take the full, uh, if anybody get hurt on those horses. Cuz that thing is open year, year round. And, I mean, dogs rush horses. Some people no more cattle-train dogs and, um, horses, cattle-train and dog, you know what I'm saying?
Chair, can I, Chair, can I address his, uh, question?
And then I wonder if they listen to those guys that stay there now? And they get, they get horses over there, I mean, they're moved from the outer place from the homestead, behind YNI homestead. They used to have the, the horses that used to walk around and they used to do that dog and pony show, like, I don't know if they get paid or what, but now they stay, um, next to the mountain and they're doing their thing on by the mountain. So I wonder if they get, um, anything from the state or lease? Cuz Eric Eno's and Home Akiole is leasing that thing for 45 years. So I like know who is gonna be accountable for it. If somebody's dog grab their horses while they're riding the horses up there.
Thank you, Mr. Eli. Um, the time is up. Um, but yes, can you bring that up to our committee? Um, we'll have a committee meeting. What committee meeting does that fall under, guys? The, um.
It's gonna be under the, if it's about the roads, it's gonna be under transportation.
You can bring it to transportation and DPP, actually, because it's up there, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and if anybody like help with the fire break, every. Yeah, and if anybody like help with the fire break every Saturdays, nine thirty, just give me a call, three nine two thirteen sixty-three.
Thank you, Mike.
Alright.
Aloha.
Anybody like help with the fire break management?
Thank you very much.
Private, that thing is private. I don't get no grants, no nothing.
I'm gonna need you. I'm gonna need you. Thank you very much. I just wanna make a short announcement. If you come to the meeting at six thirty, we tried to streamline managing our time here in Waianae Board by filling out the forms behind on the table and bringing that form up here so that we can get a head start with, 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 with the questions that you're trying to, and your concerns that you're bringing up. So that's, that's what's gonna happen. But I know sometimes everybody come in a little bit later, and then we're gonna make adjustments, but we would like to have it up here. So the Community Concerns is gonna start right now. And who do we have next on that? We have some forms up here that they filled out. Mapuana, hang on. Who's, who's, who's next? Have a hang on. So what's, what's the name? Community Concerns Board.
We also have a Member Perry online and Susan Gorman Chang online.
Go ahead, Perry.
Thank you, Chair. The last Board, the former Board, before this news session, or there was a PIG committee, which the Neighborhood Board approved. However, there was no report from the PIG Committee. And one of the members is still on the current Board, and that's Mr. Kanaban. Thank you.
Thank you, Perry. Thank you. Is James here? James Couples? Hey, Carlos, come on, James. You see these forms here? When you come to this meeting at six thirty, when it starts, there's forms in the back. Please fill them out. This is not an open, even though we ran out, please, I'll have paper over there the next time. And Logan, please, please bring more of these forms. If not, I'm gonna make more copies. Okay, I just want everybody to realize that. Please put this down. It's not an open shot thing. You come in here and then you, 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 you're gonna blow away. I mean, please, we're trying to organize this, okay? But the next meeting, when you come to it, be at six thirty, so you don't miss the information that we put out at the very beginning, so we can be organized, okay? As part of organization. Thank you very much, community. Go ahead, James.
Thank you. The question I had was, I just wanted to find out the status on our friend up on Leopold Street, Mr. Kaloki, through the DPP.
James, we didn't get to the Mayor's rep yet, okay? If that's your concern, we'll wait for the Mayor's rep. It's coming up next.
Yeah, that was for her anyway.
Community concern, thank you, James. Go ahead, Mapuana.
Yes, I have a community concern that concerns not only us, but all high school students. Did you know they took away the school bus from the high school? And it is going to be a problem. Attendance was a problem, so we gotta fix this fast. So if you have a solution, we can kuka, kuka with the Board, and I would love to be part of that. Also, the moorings for the boating, a lot of our residents that do tours, I know they pay some form of money to the harbor master. And even if they, they pay extra, if they have to clip their boats to the moorings, and it concerns the waste that's being dumped. So if they're dumping it out in the ocean, it's a problem, cuz it'll affect our food. So either whoever the harbor master is, they need to get that going. And if, if you're not sure, I'm not sure who he is. I can't even say his last name.
Joseph Simplesiano, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the last is the road closure that Miley mentioned. The thing is.
That's coming up on our Board Business.
Advocating for the state. She shouldn't. She should be advocating for us, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mapuana.
You guys are gonna talk about?
It's gonna be on our Board Business, yes, the Makaha Bridge and stuff. Okay, okay, please do. Thank you so much. Okay. Monthly reports. Community concern, go ahead.
Mahalo, Mahalo. Mahalo for having those slips. Unfortunately, we've run out of them. So those of us that come six thirty, seven thirty, eight thirty, it should still be available, so the next time. Those slips are definitely necessary because of some of the just outspokenness of some of our community. So thank you for bringing us back to order. My concern is actually with the Governor's Emergency Housing Proclamation. That proclamation is very concerning because it waives a lot of the statutes, laws, and protections of our Ina. If the Governor had done this for affordable housing, we can understand that. But the Governor did it for all housing, which means there will be more housing that we cannot afford, which makes that whole purpose moot for most of us. Cuz if you can't afford a house today, in this day and time, don't think that you can afford it in ten or twenty years when it's built out. We cannot wait for them to have their plans. Even though there is no sunshine law, there is no to protect us, to keep us informed. We need to make sure that our legislators, that we elected or not, are in those rooms that are part of the conversations, that are there to represent us. So you represent your community, your constituents, to the greatest extent possible. And I don't think that I'm the only one with this concern with that particular proclamation. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Board Member Crab, really quickly, for Community Concerns. So I was in conversation with some constituents from Mill Street by Waianae Elementary School. They were wanting to request a discussion about speed bumps. So if we can bring that conversation up in the Transportation Committee, and then if Councilmember Tupola can also be a part of that conversation, that would be appreciated. Mahalo.
Mahalo, it's noted. Thank you, Board Member Crab.
Okay, Eli. Hang on, sir. Eli, you questioned something about fire what? Fire break? Representative, not Representative, but Board Member Crab, do you have anything to address to that, that, that fire? Please do.
Okay. Mr. Eli, thank you so much. You came to the last Board Meeting from the last Neighborhood Board to discuss or ask questions about the fire break funding. It was just a clarification. It wasn't from Representative Gates' office. It was with the DLNR Fire Division. They were in conversations about getting more funding from federal funding for the fire break. I don't have, because it was in our office that put that request into, or because it wasn't Representative Gates' office that put there that request in for the fire break. That was to do with the DLNR Division.
Yeah, no, that's how I get my access anyway. I work with the Department of Forestry and Wildlife. We work together.
Yes.
Did that answer your question, Eli?
Yeah, I was wondering where the thing went, so now I know where the things, they're coming up there, but they're doing their part, the Department of Forestry and Wildlife. Tupola is doing their part.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So we got your question answered. Thank you.
Mahalo.
Alright. Susan online, please.
Yes, aloha and congratulations, Chair and new Board. I was here last month just to reiterate, shut down Red Hill Coalition is trying to get a island-wide resolution to not only defuel Red Hill, which is starting in October, but also to make sure it is never used for anything again, and that the Navy remediate to aquifer and gets all the jet fuel and PFAs out. And we have all but two Neighborhood Boards that have signed such resolution. There was a story about it on National Public Radio Hawaii today. And so just wanted to be sure that the Hawaiian Affairs Committee got the copy that I emailed last month of the RISO. And if I could find out when the next Hawaiian Affairs Committee is, I understand that RISO has to go through them before it comes to the whole Board next month. Is that correct?
Susan, we're actually preparing and organizing the committees right now, and we'll get back with you on that. We still haven't figured it all out yet. And this is our second Board Meeting here, but no excuses, but we're trying to get organized over here. Thank you so much, Susan, but we'll get in contact with you. And then the Hawaiian Affairs Committee will, will contact you.
Mahalo.
Thank you, Susan. Yeah, you have a great day. Yeah. Any questions from the Board? Questions from the community? No? Okay, hang on. Okay, we're gonna move along to Monthly Reports. Hang on. I am very sorry. We're gonna move back to Community Concerns. We have some yellow piece of papers up here with blue pieces of paper. Do you have anything, sir? Yes, you do. State your name, sir.
Your Highness Harris Malahia Fuller Jr., and I have concerns about this whole archipelago. Because, you know, this is not a paradise. This is my home. And the United States turned this into one. Dumb. And honestly, nothing good about it. The people, the kids, drugs, affecting everybody. Like, like, like you guys said, people are homeless. Everybody is homeless here. Because my home, I'm the heir of this whole archipelago, and the United States have no title to this land. Period. Period. And you guys bought all stolen land. Guys did. So I just, you guys, so I just suggest, you guys, when look who bought all the land to you people, because this is our stolen land. This is not right. This is all unconstitutional. All Americans is great Americans then. If you that way. Because, I say honestly, nothing right about this.
Thank you. They come here online.
So I'm just letting you people know that this is our stolen land. And whatever the state do, they're not listening to you people. It's all about money. We don't have money, well, down the road. So I just suggest that the state come out clean and be transparent to the people. Not being lying to people we're caught. So that's all I just wanna say right now. Thank you guys for listening. Aloha. You guys have any questions? I don't wanna answer questions right now. Because.
Mr. Fuller.
You guys can look it all up. That's the truth.
I do have, I do have your affidavit here, and I'll take a look at it. I'll read it.
That's my dossier.
I understand this, so.
It's part of my dossier.
Thank you for all the research. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, who's next? Any more Community Concerns, please? I know we don't have the yellow paper and the blue paper anymore.
Cassandra Werner, just to follow up on what she was talking about, about the school bus. So I'm unaware of this. I don't have keke of my own, but I have many nieces and nephews. And one of them just graduated from Waianae, honors, everything, going to college. We gotta push up more kids like that, but how are we gonna do that if we no more transportation for them, for get to school? My, my kids fortunate enough, their mom gonna take them, okay, but I get plenty who no more. And then you get the boat harbor, the homeless people, the drugs, everybody see the chronic, no make like you guys, no see them, is my problem. Now I getting upset because it's like, okay, we gonna take one community that is already is bus stop, right? We could put all the homeless over there, we could put all the drugs, we could let the drugs, like, everybody no get game rooms around here, everybody no get drug houses, call cops, shut them down. What are we doing? We cannot let these kids, especially high school kids, we cannot let them walk to, they gonna walk past all of this. It's just like my kids walking past the homeless at the beach, they'll go rinse off. I worried. It's, it's been five minutes. They're not back yet. Somebody go check. How come we gotta do this? Like he said, this is our home. This is our home. This makes me sad, mad, all of it. The boat harbor, I would graduate from this school in two thousand and six. We had the community over there back then. What is this, twenty twenty-three? Not for Eddie. You get, and then, and then they gonna make one homeless shelter right here next to the intermediate. Why are we putting them by our kids? Go put them by Hawaii Kai's kids, go put them by other people's kids. Now I'm pissed. Get it out of here. Clean this shit up. I hope you guys can hear me, because the kids is coming through me and I speaking for them. I took my niece and my nephew, two years old and one years old, and I gotta rake that sand for make sure no more fucking needles in them. I find in baggies. What are we doing?
Ms. Werner, and here's, here's my take on that. Here's my take on that. I really need your passion. I'm gonna, I really need you on my committee. Cuz I want you to educate the community, at the same time educate all the representatives, just like you're doing now. But now, you're gonna join our committee and get on our committee and help us out by expressing those on paper, documented, getting it to the right offices, so we can have documents behind it. And as we speak with documents, it creates volume, and when it creates volume, we should get answers, because why? It's all in writing.
And I'm okay with that. And, and that's the thing too, like, where is the community? Like, you guys gotta tell us what you guys need us to do too. We need, let us coming out to my parents' homes, telling us, okay, we get a petition going out, sign them.
Standby, we organizing.
We need all that kind of stuff.
Put you on our committee tonight. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Let's do this for the kids, okay?
We'll do it. We'll do it, yeah. Together, together.
Cassandra, and to those that are still wondering about the school bus situation, it's not for lack of funding, it's not that they don't have the buses, they don't have the drivers, okay? If you know anybody that has CDL, they're sitting at home and looking for a job, please go down and apply. But it's, it's because of lack of drivers. So just to clear understanding for that. And the reason why I'm speaking out of turn is school goes back into section, session next week already. So it's, it's just bringing that out, so that you guys understand. Thank you.
At this time, we're gonna move. Community concern?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Mahalo, Chair, for the recognition. Thank you for, I'm also trying to put order into this community, into this Board Meeting, but a lot of us still come from town. So we may not make it here to get those forms signed. So I'm sure with the grace of this Board, there will be many that may not have those forms filled out. So I am one of those. But my concern today is a lot of our, and we are host of.
State your name, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Lokana Kelly Ikoapua of Waianae Valley Homestead. But I'm here not as a homesteader, I'm here as a community member, as well as a beneficiary. And when I look at our people and we look at Waianae, we have, we have shared a burden. And I'm not saying that our people, but the burden of having everything on the West Side, whether it is our opala, whether it is our homeless, we share that burden. There's no one on the East Side that is, is sharing that burden with us. And why is that? Why is that that everything comes here? And when there's problems, boom, we're front page. But when there's victories and accomplishments of our students, whether it be in high school or college, we don't get that kind of recognition. But you know, enough is enough, like Sister said. But we need to, and even though you, you continue to encourage us to, to voice our voices, concerns to our legislators, we need some action. to our legislators, we need some action. Two thousand six, twenty twenty-three. Have we progressed? No ways. Have we regressed all the way? So you know, we talk about action. We need the action of our community, but our legislatures, and we need to, we need to holo mua. We need to have them, the state of Hawaii, as well as the rest of this island, help to share this burden. It's not a burden. It's part of your kuliana. Why is it all for Waianae? Why is it all Waianae? And so that's all, I say Chair. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you for the concern. Go ahead. Community number. State your name, please.
Aloha, I'm Rita Grillo from Mailei Elementary, and thank you for, um, allowing me the privilege to talk at six thirty. And I just wanted to reiterate, um, I sit in the crowd and I hear, um, people that they just want to be heard and they just want to listen. And, um, at six thirty, I was able to share that Waianae Economic Development Council is hosting a community priorities summit this Saturday from eight thirty to twelve thirty at the Maile Learning Center at, on the Kamaila Schools campus. It's eight thirty to twelve thirty. It's still not too late to register. Maybe this is an opportunity that you could talk about your concerns and come to a point where we can vision cast. I realize eight thirty to twelve thirty is not much time to address everything, but it's a start. And we come here monthly for the neighborhood board. That's not enough time to take action like Auntie said. So if you feel moved to spend a couple hours with our family, we're all family here on the Waianae Coast, come to that, it's not called the Community Priorities Survey. It's called Ho'ulu Ka'ulu Planning Summit. It's a very fancy name, but it really is about community priorities. I failed to make enough copies tonight too, but there is a QR code that I can share with you after we pow. I'll be here till the end. So if you're interested in registering, please sign up. And if you cannot make it, there is a survey that you can fill out and voice your concerns. And if I can have just a few more minutes just to share with you the top priorities that came through the survey, let me get that for you. And if this reaches you, if it touches you, and this is something that you want to talk about, please, please, um, register. So the priorities that came up on the surveys that was taken was supporting business and increasing job growth. Number two, caring for Ina and environment. Number three, increasing affordable housing. Number four, reducing homelessness. Five, strong, building strong and resilient families. And six, achieving digital equity and inclusion. So these top priorities that came through the survey is what we're gonna focus on and talk about. Like I said, it may not, we may not find the solution, but it's a start to find resolve for all of us. So mahalo.
Thank you very much for your information. Just, community, I just want to tell you, there's gonna be some changes and I'm so glad that tonight we got a record-breaking crowd. Usually there's only about ten or fifteen of us sitting here, but we got a record crowd tonight. And here's, and, and, and that makes me happy. And it's gonna build and grow. And this is how it's gonna grow. We are creating committees. I think Waianae are gonna have the biggest committees. And if you look to your right, these people are gonna sit on my committees also. Okay, so stick around. We got board business coming up after the reports. When we get into board business, this is where you're gonna be allowed to talk about it. And a lot of solutions that we have as Waianae Board is gonna come out right in the board business. I need you here. I need your input. Okay? All right, moving right along. We're gonna move on to the, uh, the monthly reports. Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, DPP Director, Don Apuna, are you there?
Aloha Chair, members of the commission. Can you hear me?
Uh, we, we cannot hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me? Okay, I'll, I'll speak louder.
We can hear you now.
Okay, so I actually have only a couple of updates and they're not complete. There was a question about eight five five nine six Waianae Valley Road Cedar Church investigation. So the mayor's office is gonna continue this investigation and have more information at the next meeting. Uh, there was also a question about land parcels in Makaha. A resident inquired about the status of any pending projects on three land parcels owned by the shelter. So, uh, DPP, actually, we need to do some more, uh, investigation too, and we'll report back to, uh, the commission next time. Other than that, I can drop in the chat box, although I apologize because I know there's, uh, people there that can't see the mayor's report. Um, otherwise, I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Endo?
Hi, Don. This is Calvin. Um, first of all, I have to owe you an apology for that in the last meeting. I should have spoke up when that guy was bashing you. I, I think he came to the board meeting knowing it was the first time, a new board, and I think he was hoping nobody on the board knew who, who he was. And the things he said to you, I should never have allowed him to say those things because you have been an advocate for not just Waianae, the, the city on cracking down on crooks like that guy. I was surprised he was even allowed to walk in this place. He, I was surprised he not in jail. So, um, I, I just wanted to thank you for all the things you, you do for us and the people of Hawaii for standing up against guys like that, that are not being afraid. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that. And people, that guy that came, if you ever checked, he had shooting on his property. He just do, this community members that's brought his illegal things to the board years, years ago. He's cleaned up his act, but he's still doing the illegal things. Uh, and that's why I'm still surprised he's not in jail.
Thank you, Uncle Endo.
But thank you, Don.
Okay, Philip.
Hey, Don. Um, thank you again. And then please let us know if you need any support. I mean, especially if it's come from our board. I mean, that's what we're here for. So I just have, if you could please follow up, I mean, there's been a few people coming up regarding the, the church. Uh, it's a, it's a big property that was just bought in Makaha. Um, if you could please, because the, it's gonna fall under the governor's, um, what you call, emergency proclamation for his shelters, right? But in the area that they're talking about, it is a bad area. And so they have not come to this board, and I know why they haven't come to this board, because they know we actually defend the growth of what we want in our area. So it's gonna come to yours because the only way they can do that is they have to CPR the property, and that would be city section and not state section. So please, if you could follow up with that and keep us informed on the progress with that, because we do not want that to just slip by.
Sure. That's the Cedars, Cedars Church, yeah?
No, it is the Assembly of God Church. Yeah, it's, it's, they're coming up as a shelter and again, they're pushing it under emergency proclamation is what they're doing with the governor. But they gotta come to you guys first in order to make this happen.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll keep it tabs on it and have a status next time.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Border Water Supply, Christopher Sugimoto.
Yeah.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Any questions for the, the mayor's rep?
Yes, I'm online. My hand is up.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Am I recognized Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, Don, um, I think Mr. Kratz, um, um, he's working on the Waianae Co-Sustainable Plan. If, um, you could relay the message that Makua Valley be, um, the gathering place of, of Waianae? And secondly, I, is DPP still hiring?
Yes, most definitely. We're still hiring. We have a lot of different positions. So if people are interested, please apply or contact, um, me because we have a lot of positions and it's interesting work. We can have from, um, high school graduates and then those with experience in construction, even retirees who may be interested in part-time work. We have a lot of openings and we're making a lot of changes here for the better. So, um, if people are interested, please apply.
Thank you, Don, for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Don. Moving right on. Border of Supply, please. Christopher Sugimoto.
I'm here, Chair. Uh, hello everyone. Did you want me to keep going or not yet?
Please hold. Okay, go ahead, sir. State your name and business.
My name is Professor Mel Kenzberg. I teach the Waianae Jujutsu Doja here at the Waianae Gym. Okay, I have a few things to bring up. I, I think the first thing I want to bring up is very important, especially for our community. Here's my problem. Every time I get out on this road, I see kids riding their motorcycles up and down. But they're doing pop wheelies on the street, on the highway, okay? Not being safe, they're just doing it because they see it on YouTube or some other thing. People, we gotta get these kids off the street. They don't realize how dangerous it is for the rest of the people that they're putting in jeopardy. And the police is not doing anything. I'm sorry, but I saw six cops hit by miley point. Not one of them chased them. And they were pop wheeling all the way down. Two kids, one on a quad, one on a motorcycle. And I see this almost every time I get out on the road. When are we going to stop those kids from doing that? They're causing more problems than anything else. Okay, two, because I teach jujitsu here in the class. And because I, I'm also a custodian at Kamaila Academy. I see problems in our neighborhood. I don't believe. Okay, I mean, from park to park, the grass, not green, brown. Because nobody's watering them. Nobody's taking care of the Ina. What's wrong?
Sir, when it comes to park issues, so when you come up here, you guys got multiple issues going on. And if you jump from one topic, parks, traffic.
That's why I said I have.
That's, and that's why we have committees that we're organizing. And you're gonna take it straight to the committees. There's gonna be community meetings coming up. But let us get organized so perfectly. I heard everything, motorcycles on the road, all of that. It's, that's law enforcement right there.
Yes, I know.
And that's state right there. And that's also county. Okay, so, and I'm glad you're bringing this up, but I don't think HPD is online right now.
Brings us up to the church one. Like I said, I'm a custodian at Kamaila Academy. Okay, as a custodian, I should only have to worry about cleaning classrooms, getting stuff ready. I shouldn't have to worry about the maintenance of the buildings, the plumbing, all of this. Okay, but I took the job as custodian so I could help out our community. But what I see is poor maintenance. Because the state maintenance people are not being, not doing their jobs. I'm sorry, but when you're getting paid good money to come out here and fix things, that's what you should be doing. Not talking stories elsewhere. You should be getting things fixed. Okay, and I know it firsthand when I see Kamaila Academy going downhill. When I have to go out and fix the plumbing because the plumbers don't come when they're supposed. When I have to go out and fix the, the lighting, because I can do that for our community, for our schools, so that we don't have to wait for a state worker to come out and fix something right. Because I'm being told by the workers that they're being told to just fix, temp fix, do something, get done. Okay? Right here at our own gym, second floor, the bathroom's been out, the girls' bathroom's been out for two weeks. Okay, two weeks now. Because of a leak. Maintenance came out here. They said, oh, we gotta go get parts. Never came back. This is two weeks now I'm wait, we're waiting for repairs. Now, the problem is, they said it leaked. It's raw sewage down into the boxing room. That's a health hazard. Why isn't nothing being done?
Yes, we, we appreciate everything you're bringing to the table. We definitely don't have enough time on our general board meetings for all of our different concerns. And that's why we like to push it to our committees because we have more intimate time to discuss these, these many different issues. I just wanna quickly address really quickly. And unfortunately, HPD is not online, but he has, he has on numerous occasions, this has been a heavy concern from board members, from community members as far as the, the, um, the youth and things like that, driving or just anybody driving, I mean, obviously unlicensed or un, you know, not registered. But unfortunately, it, it becomes a liability if they was to go in pursuit and, and chase them because if they were to, to crash or that or something. So it, it ties the hands of our, our enforcement officers. So I just want to get to the point of, as a community, if we can start standing together and.
You should rather the community start taking things into their own hands and.
No, addressing our children and raising our children to be pono and make righteous decisions in that we are not allowing them to ride these electronic devices or motor vehicles unauthorized on our roadways. Because what are we gonna wait for? Our child to get into an accident? So, uh, again, us as a community also has to take some of these into.
Getting hurt by those that are on the.
Yes, yes.
I wanna say.
So it's a big, it's a huge issue and it's gonna be deeper than, than our two minutes that we are allotted for every member. So if we can definitely connect offline and, and kokoa together as a community like this, I'm so excited. Like, I appreciate every one of you being here tonight.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. I really, I'm telling you guys, it's, we're, 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 we're doing everything, we're reorganizing, so you're gonna get familiar with that, yeah? Logan, I'm gonna push this over to you. You, 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 you go ahead and, and tell these people now, please, um.
Yeah, just if I could chime in, uh, the mayor's rep is actually not online anymore, so. Yeah, I, I don't know. She stepped away if, when you brought up, uh, border water supply, if she thought that her section of the agenda was done, but she actually stepped uh, away from the computer. So she's no longer online. So I think it'd actually be best if we just move on.
There's no mayor rep online, okay? So we move in hun. Border Water Supply, please. Christopher Sugimoto.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Sugimoto from the Border Water Supply. Um, I will share my reading from my monthly report. Okay, so for the month of August, um, let's see, so the main break report, so there's no new main breaks to report. The general water announcement is our twenty twenty-three annual Unthirsty Plant Sale that's happening this Saturday, August fifth. Um, admission is free and includes a variety of local plant vendors and informational booths. You can visit, learn about a plant care, pest, backyard composting and more. You can find out more on our website at www dot borderwatersupply dot com. Uh, that's the end of my report. Does anyone have any questions or comments for BWS?
Anyone have questions for Border Water Supply?
I get one.
Okay, board member?
Um, I noticed that there, um, the two bridges, uh, issues, the one at, um, uh, in Maile, Maupala Oa One, as well as the Makaha, um, uh, three and A three or something like that is, uh, there's, it's gonna be a holdup because of border water supply. So what does border water supply have to do with the bridges, can I ask?
So I'm not familiar with those projects. Is that the, uh, construction of the bridges? Is that what you're referencing?
Can you, can you find out for us and, uh, email the chair on, um, you know, why, why, why is the holdup because of border water supply? The bridge is done, so. Why is the holdup because of border water supply? The bridge is done, so if you're telling me I gotta wait one more year just for border water supply, why?
So that's the Miley Bridge, you said?
Maipalo One, yes, as well as they're gonna shut down for three days the Makaha Bridge at the Makaha Surfing Beach because of the uh, from what I understand, the border water supply. So if you could find out for us and and send it to the chair, that would really, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Governor Josh Green's representative, Stacy Lynn Eli.
Aloha, Chair, uh, board members and community. Um, with respect to time, I just wanted to get to the responses from last meeting. Um, Member Wilbur has shared that she had received calls from constituents about not getting follow-up from governor's office. So I did relay the message, um, and they're currently working to restructure the internal affairs um, regarding constituent services and protocol. Um, in the meantime, if board members continue to get, um, complaints, um, please feel free to contact me and let me know offline. Um, Member Ganabon and Waheleani had um, brought up concern about the status of the AG's investigation into Ho'omau Ke'ola. Um, and asked if governor has plan on next steps if the services are no longer available. Um, the response that I have is the Department of the Attorney General is aware of the allegations regarding Ho'omau Ke'ola. To protect the integrity of its investigative process, the department does not make statements regarding the status of an investigation. Um, also, um, I'm so happy to see so many community members here. I did wanna share, um, contact information for the governor's office. Uh, the phone number is eight oh eight five eight six zero zero three four. The email is gov dot communications at hawaii dot gov. And the governor's website is governor dot hawaii dot gov. And I just wanted to briefly share, um, if you go to our website, um, you can click on his newsletter and subscribe to be sent his newsletter monthly. Um, but for the month of August, um, governor did wanna share that he has signed the emergency proclamation um, to accelerate the relief for the statewide housing crisis. Um, it is his hope that the emergency proclamation will advance the safe construction of thousands of critically needed public low-income, affordable workforce and market rate for sale and rental units for Hawaii's residents across the state while ensuring careful stewardship of our irreplaceable natural resources and respecting our EVKUPUNA. Um, at this time, I can, if I may also share, um, community member Austin Salsido had asked, um, you know, about the governor's response to SR thirty SD one. While this resolution does not mention the office of the governor, uh, we recognize the importance of this issue. And the governor's office continues to work on solutions to address it. So at this time, I can take any questions or concerns from the boards and board members and community. Thank you.
Board members?
Uh, myself and Perry's on. Um.
Thank you, Ganabon.
Obviously, um, this is a concern that was brought up earlier by the community as well, assembly of God um, using the proclamation to develop their shelters. If you could please look into that, because I mean, there's an imbalance right now because we have a lot of shelters that's still available that are not being utilized the way it should be. And so by allowing more shelters to come up, it sets an imbalance to the holy word side Hawaiian I Coast, not just Makaha that is affecting, but all of us, because we have multiple shelters, multiple, um, homeless, um, what you call transitional units that are not being utilized. And by opening up more would just offset things worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ganabon. And I did take notes on, um, Auntie Kapua's comments as well as, um, uh, Member Johnny May Perry, um, concerns about the housing. So I will take that back to the governor's office. Thank you.
Go ahead, Perry.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, I'm Stacy Lynn. So the the project I was referring to was your former district in Nanakuli next to the church. Um, so five hundred units is in the tsunami zone. We have inadequate exit plan in in regards to emergency. Um. That proclamation is really dangerous. Um. The one in Halaba, that's almost like a replacement of KPT. And if you know, if you know the history of KPT, a lot of crime. So I don't think we have, I don't think we have a crisis. We need to figure out how to lower the prices, not increase the inventory. We're competing with population from the mainland. People leaving Hawaii because of the cost, and yet they want people to come to Hawaii. That doesn't make sense. How do we lower the cost of rent? Okay, it's not to increase inventory. That's crazy. Ten thousand units a year for next five years? They duplicating Singapore model. They duplicating what happens on the mainland and this this issuing that happens. They need to think smarter and not just come out and, you know, do a proclamation and everybody get their way. We took many years in protecting the land and our natural resources and only to be dismissed with a be ruined and damaged by a proclamation. We have already, um, shelters in place in Y Nai since Governor Lingo, and it still exists. And I guess, you know, part of the the homelessness, um, why I come is an issue because they cater, they, that's their business to address social issues. So all of that, whoever, whatever, send them here to Hawaii, um, to to Y Nai. That's not the answer. Find a solution and not just send them Y Nai. Thank you, Stacy Lynn.
Thank you, Perry, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy. We're gonna move right along. I am very sorry. We, uh, we have, uh, we have an agenda to go by. However, I'm gonna let you speak for one minute. You got you you got something for the the mayor, the governor's office, please?
Hi, Raquel Rocky. I live on Nojoleo on the Makaha Valley. Uh, my concern is with, um, the protection and who is supporting the runoff that runs off of the golf course into those ag lands, because my property butts up against it. And we're trying to be like non-GMO and not use pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers. And there are natural routes to take and that that you can even use on a golf course itself, but who is holding them accountable? Because the runoff is like really scary. So, thank you.
It is the runoff, I believe. So thank you very much, man, for sharing your concern. State your name, please.
Austin Salsido, the SR thirty, uh, for the governors. Yes, let's continue the conversation with the governor, but we have to direct this to our Houseless Committee because we have to activate Partners in Care. They're getting paid for this uh, to facilitate a point and count through legislature. Okay, so we need an accuracy of what's here, what's coming here, especially if they're coming from Waikiki. They're getting kicked out of Waikiki because of a civilian law. They're coming through the west side because they're getting ejected from Waikiki. We need a good point and count. Partners in Care, her name is Laura E. Tealid. I'll give you her email on that. You already know who's Partners in Care. We need to de-escalate this. Not enable, we have to disable this this type of entities that's coming through the west side. So this homeless committee uh, cross-scrap, please take the bull by the horns on this. Get in touch with Laura E. Tealid and have the communication with the governor's level because it's at this level already. It's SR thirty. We have too much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
Aloha. You know, people talk about surveys.
Uncle, you gotta say your name first.
Oh, aloha. My name is James K. Monaco Senior. You know, we talk, everybody talks about surveys. You know what gets me is that when you talk surveys, please do me a favor. It's irritating me. We have, uh, over a hundred thousand people here in Y Nai. So if you're gonna take a survey, please take a survey of every single one of us. Don't take the thousand people, take a thousand pieces of paper and have to take a survey and say to us that, uh, you know, a hundred people or nine hundred people, uh, you know, agree with you. And then a hundred don't agree with you. Please don't do that. We have a hundred thousand people. They nine hundred thousand people agree with you. Yeah, so please, when you take a survey, you wanna change the community, yeah? Change the community properly. Don't undersurvey a community. Yeah, because when I came here to Y Nai and in the fifties, and how many of you were in here in the fifties? It's not too many, yeah? So you can see why, you know, I I I I'm concerned. Yeah, because the people were in here. Yeah, you notice that, you folks know, not nobody, I was here in the fifties.
Thank you, uncle. I really appreciate it.
When you folks make surveys, consider me, yeah, consider us that were here. Okay, because that's why we came here.
Thank you.
Because Y Nai was an agriculture community, farming and rural.
Thank you, uncle. Really appreciate your your knowledge. Because we buying, okay, and then so we're gonna move right along with, um, with the US Army Garrison Lieutenant Colonel Pat Yun. Lieutenant Colonel Pat Yun. Okay, seven point five. I'm gonna move on to US Navy Victor Flynn, Danny Hayes.
It's, it's, sir, this is, uh, Major Sam Herbert. Can you hear me?
Are you represented in the US Army Garrison? Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, I'm calling in on behalf of Lieutenant Colonel Pat Yun. We are currently in Australia for an exercise. Uh, but I've been listening along and, uh, taking notes on behalf of him in the garrison.
Go ahead, sir.
No, nothing significant to report. I just wanted to pass along Colonel Yun's, um, apologies for not being able to attend. Uh, we we acknowledge the the comments thus far, uh, from both the community members and the elected officials in the board specifically about, uh, the the community concern about Red Hill as well as, um, the Makaha Valley, uh, Makua Valley, excuse me, uh, and the lease renewal in twenty twenty-nine. So happy to answer any questions that, uh, community members may have for US Army Garrison Hawaii. Um, otherwise, let's continue to, uh, monitor any comments that, uh, individuals may have.
Okay, sir, we got one for you. I believe there's a community member over here that spoke about, um, I think she's sitting right there in the green. Stacy Eli. Stacy, the person that's sitting next to you said something about Makua? Or or golf course? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, any questions for the, uh, US Army Garrison? Board members? Okay, US Army Garrison, thank you, sir. We appreciate your service. US Navy Victor Flynn, Danny Hayes.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, community.
Aloha.
I'm Danny Hayes with the Navy Public Affairs. Um, wanted to read off a few of the notes. We provided you the the full report earlier today, Mr. Flint did. So I'll read, uh, some of the highlights for the, on the Navy side. Uh, the twenty twenty-three Navy Water Quality Report is available. Uh, this has information about, um, the water tests that were done over the last year. Uh, that's posted, um, uh, we shared the link with you all. Um, and what's, what, uh, we also would like to share with the community is that um, periodically, a team will help, um, show folks how to read those, um, that website online. Uh, the next time they'll be doing that is on August thirty-first at the Hickam Exchange. Um, they're gonna be moving locations from time to time so that they can be somewhere like the main Navy Exchange where uh, people who don't have base access can go to. Reason why they went to Hickam this time is because, um, uh, there were, uh, families that were asking for them to come out there. So the Navy Quality, uh, Water Quality Report is available. And also, the, um, Joint Task Force Red Hill, uh, they announced that they completed removal of approximately four hundred and eighty thousand gallons of fuel from four underground surge tanks. Now, these tanks are actually located near the joint base, but, uh, they're not being used. They haven't been used since, uh, they were ordered to shut down. So the Joint Task Force decided to remove all of that in preparation of the final defueling later on this this year. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Flint.
Thank you, Brother Danny. Aloha, board.
Aloha.
Victor Flint, Public Works. Y Nai Coast Sustainable Community Plan. Navy is participating with other agencies, activities to include the two leeward neighborhood boards. Matter of fact, on August eleventh, we'll be doing a Huakai. And and that's, the focus is Department of Planning and Permits, but we're going to include our new Y Nai Neighborhood Board Chair and Nanakuli Vice Chair. The focus is gonna be the Y Nai Coast Emergency Access Route along with Koli Koli Pass. Those are two vital uh, roads that we need for emergencies. So that's gonna be the focus. And speaking of Koli Koli Pass, it's clear and passable for declared emergencies. That's all I have. Are there any questions for myself or Brother Danny?
Board members? Come on up. Go ahead, Lanford.
I guess, uh, Vic, you know, my, uh, constant, uh, picking on you on the Navy and, uh, I guess the new one tonight listening to Andrea is, uh, with all the money that was spent up there fixing the bridge and stuff at, uh, Koli Koli, why can't Koli Koli be open at least even if it's only one car in, one car out? Uh, accessible to our community, uh, for emergencies or uh, whatever, um, uh, uh, emergency needs that they need. So I I I I guess I'm asking the Navy to, uh, please, uh, look into opening it up for us. We really, we really, really need it. Thank you. Also, uh, secondly, I'm still waiting for a, uh, uh, for the lights on Pakia Road so they can, um, for security reasons, if the Navy can put couple of those, uh, 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 lights that can, uh, convince our guys that throwing all their rubbish away, that they're on camera or they're, you know, they can be seen and so on and so forth. So I would appreciate that out of the Navy. Thank you.
We're good to go, Uncle Rich. Your concerns with Koli Koli, that's why we're going on that Huakai. You need to see with your own eye and then you could be better able to make a factual decision. We're we're gonna check on that one. Uh, Pakia, your request has been submitted. This year is kind of foul for budgeting. We're looking at two thousand twenty-four. It's still in there, but we have to compete for funds with other projects, but it's in there, Rich.
Thank you, Vic. Appreciate that. I'm very sorry, but we got board business to take care. We're gonna move right along. Thank you, Vic. Thank you for the monthly reports, all the reporters. Right now, we're gonna move into presentations and it's gonna be handed off to the Y Nai High School Track and Field Improvements Project. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I believe I have a presentation to show here. My name is John Murrooka, Aloha Chair, Aloha Board, Aloha Community.
Aloha.
I'm here to present the project for the Y Nai High School Track and Field Improvements, uh, Torii E. Field. So the Y Nai High School campus is in the special management area. And being such that this project is more than five hundred thousand dollars, it triggers a SMA permit major which, um, requires this informational outreach in addition to an EA, uh, which is ongoing. So the draft EA is currently out for comment. Um, it is available online if you'd like to review, and it's also a hard copy. This at the Y Nai Library, okay? So I'm on behalf of DOE presenting this project here. So this project here is basically gonna, uh, replace the dirt track at Y Nai High School with an all-weather synthetic track. Uh, its natural grass field would become a synthetic turf field. Okay, there'll be some utility improvements. The track and field events will get moved around to a more optimal location within the facility. Okay, and, um, the construction cost is approximately six million. Okay, this is just an aerial photo. Okay, this is just an aerial photo of the campus, which um, you know, you folks are well aware of. You can see the track and field is going in the exact same footprint. Okay? This is just a zoomed-in aerial photo of the track and field itself. Okay, next slide. A track and food events, you can see the existing drainage channel there. We're not gonna touch the existing drainage channel, okay, which goes within the field. Track and field events within the field will move outside so that they can optimize the size of the soccer field within the um, playing field area within the track. So this is just the school general plan, which um, was in the presentation.
Yeah, and it's encouraged for the community, please come to the meetings and get everybody here because this is what's happening. All of this kind of stuff's happening. It's glitches. We are here.
Okay, well, if, if the presentation can go on, there are a lot of, it was just photographs of um,
Please do.
Existing track and fields. We've done about fifty of them in the state. And um, we would have shown you the YNI graphics, what the field would look like with the synthetic turf and the new track and field. And I guess um, it would be a see if they get it running.
Sir, you can, you can continue right now, sir, because I, we will be buying in time. I'm so sorry that the community has a lot of things to talk about tonight, so now just keep talking.
So as a sort of time, I was basically gonna
Thank you very much.
Photos there, but I'm, I'm just gonna cut the photos out. And I'll just show you basically what the YNI Track and Field graphics look like so you guys can envision the improvements there. And that would be the pretty much the end of my presentation unless, you know, you want to see photos. There's just a lot of photos in there on the
Thank you so much, yeah.
This could pretty much be it.
Yeah, so we, we, we buying for time, sir. This place closes at nine o'clock. So I need my time to do board business, please. Thank you so much, yeah. If anybody has any concerns, he did voice his concerns. It was about the YNI Track and Football Team. They're building a new field out there, correct? Track, field and track. Thank you so much, sir, for that presentation. We're gonna move right along. I am very sorry. But as a Chair, we're gonna move right along and I hope you understand me. Uh, we have some organization to do. Tonight, we're gonna organize this team. And the reason for that, I am very sorry, we cannot handle issues if we don't organize the team. We need to organize before we take in any issues. And that's why I'm establishing committees tonight. Very important, so we can break it off into committees and not have this meeting be long drawn out. Okay, I spoke about this. And this is why we, we cannot take action if we don't form the committees with the expert opinions and the expert people in that committees to handle all your questions. Please, we're gonna move right along with board business. I am creating an organizational chart. Okay? And this organizational chart is gonna include a Department of Permit and Planning. It is important, it is critical, it is crucial to have a committee like that, so we can address all these problems in the community. YNI is a huge moku. I'm very sorry, I've been so nice for the last two and a half, three hours. It, it, I'm gonna move on. So if we get prepared and we can handle you, handle the community. Second committee is gonna be the Hawaiian Affairs Committee, which are gonna include the EV, the HEAL and the Agriculture Committee. Education, Health and Welfare. It's another committee. It's probably on there already. Parks. Transportation Committee. Public Safety Committee. We had safety with education. We're gonna remove the safety and plug it to where it makes sense. And how to be organized and making sense is you take that public and you turn safety right next to it. It's called Public Safety. Ocean Safety and Erosions. That's another committee we need to get, get through tonight. If we don't organize tonight, please, we have to, because of time. Your time is precious. Every one of you got multi-million issues. But we're gonna organize so we can work hand in hand, side by side with the Mayor's Office, with the Council Members, with the leadership, State, Senate, House, everybody. But if this board don't get any organized tonight, we are on the agenda. You can go online and pull it up right now. Anything that's placed on our agenda gives us the opportunity to discuss it, to talk about it. And that's what we're doing. Homeless and housing, that's a live issue. But if we cannot categorize this in a proper way, every time somebody come to the mic, we got a lot of things to say. Hang on. Let me do this presentation. This is a different meeting. I'm very sorry. But you coming to see somebody that's trying to organize and lead. You understand that. I need every one of you here. When I talk about the committees tonight on board business, you're gonna volunteer with me so we can handle this community. I've been to so many board meetings. We come up here, guys, talking, talking, talking. Yeah, no action. Well, let me show you something. The new leader is in town. He got action. Because if you listen to my board meeting, you're gonna know what kind of action we're gonna handle tonight. Please, bear with me. Now that you know I'm trying to organize the committees, we're gonna go right into board business. And I hope you stand by and listen because I don't wanna hear you come over here. Me, I got a good memory. I can see my audience and know who came in and talk about the same thing ten times, ten times over. Yeah, I'm a normal human being. My name is Jonathan Omanau. The board business contains establishment of new committees, designations of committee chairs, other community business, pending projects or permits for new homeless shelter in Makaha, livestock management and feral animal concerns. Makaha Bridge Closure. A lot of you came over here with that same question. We could have consolidated that. Okay? Identifying and evaluating alternate strategies of traffic correction actions. Involving Nanakuli, access roads, roads that lead up to what? Koli Koli Pass. I'm an army guy. Take my paperwork back then, educate ourselves to know that I'm a military kind of guy. So I work coincide, side by side with the military. Sound meter and report writing training. Deputizing the YNI Coast Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-Four. That's what we're trying to do here. The reason for the deputization is because we're working side by side with HPD. I have a meeting, I'm on the agenda tomorrow with the Police Commission. That's action. I'm not waiting for somebody to tell me what to do. I love all of you. But I hear all your complaints because you care. I hear all your complaints because you have passion. Well, stay right here tonight because I'm gonna organize this committee. If you take a look to your right, one of the most famous water safety mans, Brian Carolina. I'll put a great big hand for Brian Carolina, please. Paul Ayew, retired police officer, sheriff. How about a great big hand for this guy? Don't you think that YNI Board is gonna take action? Yes, you better believe it. I went around and got all my people. John Travis. Security. Terry Savaya, very instrumental in the homeless. Nurse before, she can explain it all. This is what I'm trying to do. I've given you your, your eye view of guys that I'm trying to commit here, who's taking a voluntary step to help this community to improve. That's all I'm trying to do tonight. So we're gonna take care of business, one by one. I wanna hear your concerns tonight. Deputizing the YNI Coast Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-Four. Anybody wanna stand up in your place? Don't walk over there because you're gonna take longer than thirty seconds to get to my mic. How do you feel about deputizing this board to help work side by side with the community? Already, I'm in, on the agenda for the Police Commission. I'm, I'm taking a step forward. Everybody can come see me and talk to me. But if nobody takes a step forward, we're gonna have a hard time. Why? We waiting for somebody call a decision. In the military, it's a life or death situation. I'm very sorry. I make decisions because I care about my personnel behind me. Here we go. Before I can make the motion on deputizing the YNI Board, I need to get with the Police Commissioners to see if we can go forward. But remember this, ladies and gentlemen. What we're trying to do on board business here is very important. I got bigger plans. The board got bigger plans. It might turn into a training session. Don't worry about who's gonna train them. Let me talk about deputizing. The officers will have limited powers, limited powers, no arrest, no gun carry, no takedowns. Just report writings. You agree with me? We can train on report writings. We don't wanna go out there like bullies in this community with guns on our hip because we got the police officers to take care of what? The major problems. I wanna take care, the board wants to take care of sound meter issues, anti-call-up. Oh, we get big noise going down here. Okay, what, what we gonna do? Well, this board is gonna purchase sound meters. Sound meters issued to the deputized officers as a volunteer. If the nine members don't wanna volunteer, then Jonathan will volunteer. You can get that. If you call me up in the middle of the night, I will be there. If you tell me you got a noise problem, I will be there. If you tell me you got the wild animal coming up from the dog and this and that, I will be there. I was a prior investigator. Five years, I done all that sound check. Mr. So and so, hang on. Yeah, that's what we're doing. I need your discussion. Anybody wanna comment on that? Is it a good idea? Tell me now. Okay? Sign meter, sound meters and report writing. We talked about that. You see the kind of organization and the things that I'm bringing to the table, we are bringing to the table as fellow officers of United, of the, of the county? That's what we wanna do here. I don't want you to come in here and think that nothing's gonna get done. It's gonna get done. I'm the new Chairman. I deserve a little bit of respect. We're gonna prove the minutes. Hang on. Let me get you to business. Nine point four on the agenda. Talks about identifying and valuing alternate strategies for traffic corrective actions. Everything is moving. We got permits in our hand. So that access road, yeah, it's Nanakuli's business, but they blocking YNI and Makaha. That's one issue. I am planning, this board is planning to open that at five thirty in the morning and close that at about seven PM in the evening. Limited, so that nobody dump ice boxes, refrigerators, tires all over there. Don't you think we know about this? We do. We know about this. And when you leave that road unmonitored, guess what people do? Throw trash. Right? So what we're gonna do is we're gonna put people in place. And so I got John Travis over here. We're gonna organize a team. I need everybody in this community to step up to the plate. Not only talk, help this board move forward. Talking about the next one, Makaha Bridge. Already did the research. Chin Ho had donated that land over there for that access road, his vision back in his day. Donate it. What? They're not doing nothing, right? This board got a lot of power. We are going to do something. I am looking at the military. If you can hear this, I ordered two low boys. What is a low boy? Two D seven Gs. What is the two uh, D seven Gs? One Bomag. One Rola Compacta. Seven army personnel. And one surveying team. The reason why I said that is because now you can figure out what the Chairman is all about. I was a prior engineer in the United States Army. I served in a combat arms area. I built airports, railroads and everything. But just to give you an idea of the passion I have, that's why I took this position. Because I know I can help the community. Okay, let's move right along. Nobody would know what to order. You know how much army personnel going over there or navy personnel? They, I tell you how the military work. Be more specific. How much men do we need? How many hours are we gonna spend? But I know the order is in, contacted the liaison already. We put it in action over here. And this is what we were talking about earlier today. I was just waiting to get to my board business. Okay? If we could get to the board business, business so you can see what we're trying to do here, organize and move forward to help the community utilizing it, working side by side. It's gonna make all of our jobs easier. So none of you will come in here next time poking and pushing, which is fine. It's a community concern, but now we're gonna what? Fix it. Livestock Management and Feral Animal Concerns. Again, when you deputize, you're under oath. You take it out there with limited powers. And you take pictures and you write your reports and you submit that to the HPD. That's what this board wants to do. With your approval, this board can do that. Pending projects and permits for new homeless shelter in Makaha. We talked about that all day long. All day I heard, oh, this debt, oh, whoa, oh, eh, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna identify that. We're gonna make people accountable. Yeah, we can approve how much drugs went in the person or if the person came out and, and, and had, took in a shot because we have psychedelic issues going on with PTSD and, and mental health. And then go downtown and get recreational drugs and plug that up. But here's my solution. Why are they out eight hours? You asked that question. Why are we out eight hours? Then eh, let's look back at how we're gonna manage that. Do we need personnel to be on site to say, hey, you know what? I gotta monitor you. Why don't we put this, why don't we put this uh, uh, the same thing they put on the prisoner when he come out, the ankle it. Why don't we do that? So we can monitor where that person goes. It's real simple. All we gotta do is ask. Ask and you shall receive. Okay? Pending projects and permits for new homeless housing. We just talked about that. And now we're gonna move right into the approval of the initial convening minutes. I heard that we couldn't do it, correct?
Uh, we can do it now, Chair, because uh, the site is working online.
Is it working?
Yes, we're able to take board action.
Hang on before I get to that. I'm gonna deviate from that, and here's why. I gotta get committees done. Hang on. If we don't get it done, we're gonna be two months behind. It's gotta get done.
Chair, I would also recommend that if you would like to make the motion, that you pass the gavel to Vice Chair.
I make a motion. I move that we create a Department of Permit and Planning for the YNI Board. We got a second? Any discussions? Any discussions?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, who was the second? And yeah.
Gannabon seconded.
Gannabon, I need to. My microphone was off. Uh, so I have a motion on the floor from board member Ho'omanawanui is seconded by Gannabon.
This discussion?
And any discussion?
Um, what is happening? What what is this? Department of?
Discussion?
Can we please restate the motion for understanding and clarification?
I move that we create a department of permit and planning committee. We have a first and we have a second.
Discussion? I'll have a question. Thank you, chair. Um, for this committee, is this to help um fast track permits, like conversation and applications? Is that what this committee is for?
Board, board member. Everything that includes permit and planning will fall under that. Wait, 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 wait. So 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 it's a huge area. It's a huge area with department permit and planning, and it includes that. Housing permits. All of this, it does, okay? Any more questions?
Oh, you need. I recognize member Kale Wilbur.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah. Uh, is my understanding that the reason for this committee to be formed is to also um help with monitoring all the illegal um halfway houses and the illegal um uh construction
Exactly.
and issues that that do infringe um in the community. Um, one main concern is the mental health. Um, and influx of facilities that are popping up. Um, and it's becoming a obviously a big issue with with everybody and and how homeless are allowed to continue to um I guess do what they do. Um, but the one big concern for this committee is to make sure that these facilities are held accountable and making sure that they are doing these um facilities within the ramifications of the law. And um and make sure that they are they are permitted correctly. Um, and that's my understanding on this uh as well as other permits will fall into place. But I think a lot of it has to do with illegal.
Point of order. Chair.
Oh.
You think?
Can I jump in somewhere over there? Um, I I I think I need a little bit more clarification, but let me let me try to see if what I say makes sense. As I understand uh with my previous um involvement with other committees uh since two thousand and ten. Um, our the committee is formed to address the situations that the community has or uh residents have uh as well as uh uh the homelessness or houseless people. So when we form this particular committee, it come uh we we also um recruit residents that want to be part of it. So as this, as we build our committee and we have a substantial amount of people there, whenever a person or a group comes in, we as the commu- uh as the committee tries to section off of what departments that they should go to, whether it's the Senator's office or or um uh uh Daris Killa's office or whatever. And try to have them guide us, which is the committee, to what direction we should take to help out. So that's what I'm familiar with as far as the committee goes. But if it if it's beyond our realm, that it's something that we we we're not able to help them with with is legal, then we have to go back to our um elected officials to to guide us and and try to help us uh as as much as they can as as far it. That's what I'm familiar with. So it is pages, please.
Board member Lanford, really quickly. Um, Logan, can I have point of clarification? So I was understanding that we are putting a motion on the floor, but as far as creating another committee, isn't chair already authorized to do so?
I I would have to double check the neighborhood plan.
Okay, so we actually don't need this motion, but is there another motion that you would like to present to the board?
Well, I'm trying to establish committees right now, so uh the next one would be ocean safety and erosion.
So just state your committees, but can we go back to nine point one? Because everybody online is very lost in where we are on the agenda. So we need to follow i- in order the on the agenda approving the minutes of July eleventh. So if we can have a motion on the floor for July eleventh minutes, the motion needs to be stated. So uh board member Tiana Wilbur. Motion, motion to convene convene the minutes, approve the minutes, um the written minutes for the video recording Tuesday, July eleventh. And I believe board member Perry has some corrections I seen in the chat earlier.
Yes, but it's it's um it it wasn't on the agenda, so that's why I put it in the chat. It says approval of initial convening meeting written summary for video record. So the way I'm reading is this is instead of a written report, what is being suggested here, you using the um web next to the the video as replacement of the written minutes. That's my, that's how I'm understanding this.
Sorry about that. It is worded differently, but that is the further approval of the minute.
I can clarify that. Yeah, so the written summary for video record is actually just the new uh version of minutes that's being provided by the N C O. So it's effectively the same thing. It just comes with a video component. You can see on top of the minutes, there's a YouTube video link and then a link to the Google Drive, and that references any materials that are called upon during the meeting. And the uh the minutes is basically just that. It's just the written summary with uh with the video, the YouTube video accompanying it. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, I I would like to add that I I don't agree with that format cuz I like to read the whole completed thing and not go watching video. I I prefer a hard copy in writing, so I would say no to this motion if there's a motion. Thank you.
The motion has not been seconded.
I second the motion. Any discussions? Discussions? Discussions?
Discussion mentioned, no, Perry.
We called for the vote, okay? We got that approved. Deputizing the Wine Ice Coast Neighborhood Board.
I'm sorry, chair, I need some clarification on who made the motion, and then I know that uh member Endo seconded it.
Roll call vote.
Tiana, Tiana made the made the 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 motion. And Mr. Endo seconded the motion.
No, it was Mr. Endo's, Mr. Lanford, right?
No, Mr. Endo was the.
Mr. Endo is the second, okay? Okay, moving right along. Nine point two, board business.
No, no, there's a vote, right? Don't we get the vote? Don't we get the vote on this motion?
Yes, we do. Okay, all those in favor? All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
One abstain? All those in favor say aye?
Oh, no, no, roll call vote.
All those oppose, nay?
Perry, no.
We cannot come to agreement, Logan.
You can if you do a roll call.
Okay, Logan said everybody else, everybody else agree with the one no. Uh abstaining is Tiana, Tiana Wilbur.
Crab also abstaining.
Uh crab also abstaining.
Roll call.
We don't have to do that.
Getting everybody confused.
Recommend doing a roll call only because uh the the voting is not clear at this time, at this time.
Too much confusion.
Okay, roll call. We'll start with uh cross crab, board member.
I I'll I'll call the roll call, chair. The motion on the table is to approve the initial convening meeting uh written summary of video record. Crab?
Abstain.
Endo? Gannabon? Lanford?
For video report.
Lanford? Yes? Yes? Through of the minutes.
Perry?
No.
Wahilani? Wilbur, uh Kale?
Yeah.
Tiana Wilbur?
I would like fair discussion on this, so abstain.
Ho'omanawanui? Uh, we're in the middle of a motion. We need to complete the vote at this point. The motion to approve the initial convening meeting written summary for video record passed with a vote of four ayes, two noes and two abstentions.
Alright. Deputizing the Wine Ice Coast Neighborhood Board. Number twenty. Volunteer basis. We get a vote on that?
Roll call.
Roll call. Cross crab?
Chair, can we have discussion?
Has it been seconded?
We talked about this earlier. I mentioned a lot to the community that what we're trying to do is deputize the Wine Ice Coast Neighborhood Board, not for our own gain, but for the community concern. Okay, roll call on this, please.
Pardon me, who was the?
Second? Did we get a motion and a second and nine point two?
Please, I'm I'm trying to clarify.
Okay, so board member Tiana Wilbur, motioning to deputize the Wine Ice Neighborhood Board number twenty-four.
Thank you, Tiana. And do we have a second?
Gannabon second?
On second, thank you. Is there, you guys wanna carry out any discussion, chair?
Any discussions?
Yes, please.
Who?
Tiana Wilbur.
Go ahead, Tiana.
Okay, so this has already been brought forth to our neighborhood commission's office, and they have stated that they will not protect us on any measure if we do this in this capacity as a neighborhood board. So for me, in my service as neighborhood board, I would not like to jeopardize my position here as a neighbor neighborhood board board servant and community servant. I am more than happy to serve outside of this neighborhood block board platform being deputized. But I do not wanna carry it out on this platform because it's not really necessary. We won't get any more power or any less power. So if we already have police commission standing in the gap and willing to train our leaders in our community that's willing to come forth and take on this task, then that's awesome. And we also have our neighborhood security watch that can also um perform these efforts. As for me and my stance as a servant on this neighborhood board, I I do not wanna jeopardize the relationships we have with our neighborhood board commissions as well as the rest of our community. So if we can serve on a different platform, then I'm for it. But currently on this neighborhood board, I I'm not for this deputization at this time.
Okay, and uh discussion, I I'm I'm satisfied with that. That's why I said it's a volunteer basis uh for the board. But if you don't wanna do it, uh there's other people or maybe myself that wants to take upon the role because I have the expertise and the know-how to go about doing stuff like this. I'm just looking out for the community, and that's that is my discussion uh towards that. And I I am on the board tomorrow at the police agenda to get things moving. Um, and we'll see what they say. So it's a point of discussion tonight, however. Go ahead, any other discussions?
Thank you, Chair. Perry, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Perry.
Thank you. It's nine sixteen. What I heard at the neighborhood board commission meeting, this goes for all board members. If you go out of the realm of the neighborhood plan and rules and you get sued, you're on your own. Nobody got your back. You're on your own. So be be clear of what you guys doing, okay? You if somebody sues you, you're on your own. There's no protection from the N C O.
Thank you, Perry.
My vote is no.
Yes, and thank you very much. And see, to take action, I recommend it that we move on this deputizing the Wine Ice Coast Neighborhood Board as a volunteer basis. If you can see, we wanna create movement in the community at the same time, help the community. So that's my discussion. I mean, I'm taking the proper steps. There's nothing in the bylaws that tells us we cannot do it, but be careful. That's what I heard on the police commission uh on the uh border commission's meeting. Be careful because this could happen to you, this could happen to you. However, if you don't stick your feet forward and ask, hey, can we be supported to do this kind of stuff? Then nobody's gonna step forward. Why? Everybody's waiting for another leader to tell him what they can do and what they can't do. As long as we're in the guidelines of the charter and the guidelines of the plan and the guidelines of the bylaws, I don't see any issues. So at this time, I'm gonna call for the question.
Uh, just one more point of discussion, chair. Uh, the N C O's recommendation is to not deputize the board as the board is merely an advisory board to serve an advisory manner. And that's that's all I wanted to say. I can take the vote now.
And that's correct. Uh, the N C O, thank you for your information, but if you listen here, neighborhood, please go have your community come in here in this meeting because these are major topics that we need to cover. I don't wanna hear that, we don't wanna hear that you come in and we're not doing nothing. We're taking a step forward. If we get stopped, let it be at the higher levels. Because tomorrow I'll go walk, I'm walking in, I'm on the agenda for the police commission. I'm gonna bring the same things up with the limited authority. Nobody's gonna go out there with guns. Nobody's gonna go out there. And if you you accident, I hate to say prone, then then don't go out. If you're afraid to go out, then let somebody go out. And I will take the responsibility because I did hear on the border commissions that the chair will be responsible. However, the chair can choose too. If I don't think you can handle this out there, then we're gonna choose somebody that can go out there and with expertise. That's why I'm developing a public safety department also to help out on this issue. So I call for the question. Please, take the vote.
Okay, the current motion on the table is to deputi- deputize the Wine Ice Coast Neighborhood Board number twenty-four. It was made by Tiana Wilbur and seconded by Philip Gannabon. Crab?
No.
Endo?
Aye.
Gannabon?
Aye.
Lanford? Perry?
No.
Wahilani? Kale Wilbur?
No.
Tiana Wilbur?
No.
Ho'omano, Ho'omanawanui? The motion does not pass with a vote of four ayes and four noes, zero abstentions.
So with that said, we cannot do sound media and report writing. However, go ahead, Lynn. Victor, go ahead.
Hello, board. Victor Flint, U S Navy. This isn't one way or the other. I just want to give some information to the people and to the board. The Navy is a is a stakeholder in the Wine Ice Coast Emergency Access Route. When we get blocked on Farrington all the damn time, we're hoping that the police would open up the bypass road so we can get through. Now, the emergency bypass road is a city function. The Navy is a stakeholder, but we wrote the license to the city. The city is in control of the gate key. And there's many reasons why the city will not open the gates. They have their reasons, not my kuliana. But those of you who know my family from over here, we get the same problems in Farrington as we all do. Now, with that license, and I'm ma with that license cuz I wrote the damn thing. City doesn't have to ask, mother may I? Oh, Navy, can we please open up the gate? It's not a Navy thing. The city has to declare the emerg- emergency. The city has to declare the emerg-, emergency. So, I'm just looking at any way that can work. And as far as lawsuits, as an emergency responder, you can sue anything. Doesn't mean you're gonna win that lawsuit. But we cannot declare that emergency. That has to be a city function with a city official. These are city officials. I know that there has to be more discussion, but the Navy is on board as far as working out a solution. And these guys get the pola pola. Never mind what I say, they have the paperwork. So they can read with their own eye what they can and cannot do. I could tell you what the Navy cannot do. It's, we can't make that decision. That has to be a city function. Good luck to you all.
Thank you, Victor. Okay, moving right along. Identifying and evaluating alternate strategies for traffic correction actions. Okay, and he just talked about that. And that is concerning the traffic coming in through those roads, those access roads that we wanna use so we can divert traffic all the way down to the Waianae Comprehensive Center. Come out and free the people back into Waianae and Makaha area, okay? And that's why I believe that this is gonna be revisited. We may not need to have the deputization of the Waianae Coast Neighborhood Board. We already are under oath to do what we gotta do. But we're gonna cover, uh, create action, and that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna move forward, we're gonna train, we're gonna still do the sound meter. We're still gonna do everything within our realms and according to the bylaws. Okay, the next on the agenda is Makaha Bridge closure, detour bridge three, closure bridge three alpha, which is concerning the community. I already wrote a letter, working side by side with the military, to the liaison, because that land there was donated by Chin Ho back in the day. Again, we're on this topic, that we wanna create an access. I'm gonna tell you right now, through experience, building bridges, roadways for the Army, that if you're gonna bring the people up and shuttle here and there, you still gotta come across, right? What if we get an emergency? What if we get an emergency? What's gonna happen? They're probably gonna have to send an evac, a helicopter over on that side. So think about it long and hard, Makaha residents. We are here for you.
Chair, if I may. Um, I just wanna announce to the, the community that here, I know majority of you, um, that is present tonight is regarding this, um, project. But we do have George from DOT, Department of Transportation, here in the room, and it would be amazing for us to connect with him and, and share Manao or whatever you're feeling directly to him so that we can filter out what is our concerns as a community. So George is back here, if you can just...
Thank you very much. Hang on, George, hang on right there. I'm not finished with the, with the board business. She just recognized you. Okay, let's move right along. We're gonna stick to the agenda. Okay, livestock management and feral animal concerns, we still gonna do that. We're gonna push, press, and press hard. They're gonna call me up, I'm going out there with my camera, I'm gonna start writing reports. We still can do what we gotta do. Whether we meet the roadblocks, we're gonna climb it over on the side, we're gonna get through it, we're gonna bridge that gaps. Okay? Pending projects and permits for the new homeless shelters in Makaha. That's a major concern. We already talked about that earlier. I gave you some insights. Like Andrea said, if I read correctly, we're gonna keep the country country and the city city. And here's my take on that. We already have a safety issue coming into the roadways, transportation safety issue, already. We don't need more people coming down here and establishing more things that we don't need. Now, if we need certain, uh, projects and infrastructure, that can be developed and that can be designed. But hear me out.
Point of order, Chair, real quick. Over time, 9:15, so we no longer have low...
Point of order, please, Ms. Wilbur. Let me get through this.
Not everybody taking minutes for our meeting. We need to, we need to extend our meeting for...
And all we have to do is continue pressing forward, and I need all of you. Please don't leave, don't get your names if you wanna help out with the committees. At the same time, we're gonna establish new committees and designation of committee chairs and other committee business. And that's what we're gonna do. Logan, do you wanna take this all in favor, aye? Or do you wanna take it in another voting for the committees to be changed?
Uh, I recommend that you guys postpone this until next meeting. I need to confer with my superiors at the NCO. That would be my recommendation.
Okay? If you recommend that, Logan. We need to adjourn this meeting with a pulley. At this time, we're gonna continue with a pulley. Father, I do ask you to guide us. Make our hearts in the right place with you, not our own agendas. May your peace guide us. May your word guide us. And I thank you that you have been doing extraordinary things in Waianae to make Waianae great. So we ask your blessing and your guidance in Jesus' name. Amen.
That board meeting is a... Thank you very much. Those of you wanna meet me, please stand by, I'll be right with you.
I, I wanna make one, one thing clear. I go to Waianae Assembly of God, the property...